Young woman in the audience, and her name is Reese Madder. She's sitting right up in the front row with her parents. She's a seventh grader at DePauli Middle School, and she has been selected to be our mayor for the day. She's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We then have a proclamation, and we will hear from her parents for a moment. After that, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. And this is, I'm saying this because I know we have a number of people in the audience who don't generally attend our meeting. So, once we do the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll go into roll call. We'll then go into public comment. And just so you can prepare yourself, we have a lot of people signed up for public comment today, so I'm going to ask people to please try to stick to about a minute, minute and a half at the most. And if there's something else that you need to speak to, then just let me know. You're going to need a little more time. But, and given the size of the audience and what we need to get through today, I'm asking you to try to get your thoughts down to a minute. And this is, I know we have a lot of students in the audience. This is a great challenge for you, is how to be succinct and articulate and get your thoughts across, okay? So, we're going to, again, after public comment, for those that haven't joined us before, we'll approve the agenda, and then we will go into our minutes, and then we will go into our consent agenda. So, with that, I'm going to call up Reese Madder to stand up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you so very much. We're going to ask you if you would mind reading the proclamation. It's your choice. I'd like to call up Reese Madder and her parents up to the podium. And you'll be joined by our former vice mayor, Councilmember Reese, himself.
Madam Vice Mayor, if you don't mind, can we take roll call before we get into-
Oh, I apologize, it just wasn't on my list that way.
That's okay.
Okay, please, call a roll.
Okay, so we're going to call the meeting for Wednesday, December 6th, to order for the Reno City Council. So, we're going to move into item A2 roll call. Councilmember Breckus.
I'm here.
Duer.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Ebert.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Shevy, absent at this time. Madam Vice Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council, so we will move into proclamations.
All right, thank you.
Madam Clerk, did we call roll for Mayor Madder?
Mayor Madder is present.
Love that.
Thank you.
And before we get started, I just wanted to mention too, I'm not vice mayor, not the mayor. The mayor is at another meeting today that was called unexpectedly and not with her excitement, she wanted to be here. She probably won't be joining us for a few hours, but I know she's with us in spirit, so to you, Councilmember Reese.
Thank you so much, Madam Vice Mayor. It's an honor to be here, especially with someone with a great name like Reese. So, I'm happy to read this proclamation on behalf of the office of the mayor, and on behalf of the vice mayor. It says, "Whereas Reese Madder is a star student and seventh grader at DePauli Middle School in Reno, had an all-star performance on national TV at the Little League World Series home run hitting contest this year. And whereas Reese became the first athlete ever to represent Reno in the Little League World Series after she won the Pacific Region Softball Home Run Hitting Contest at T-Mobile Field in Seattle, and earned a trip to Williamsport, Pennsylvania for the famous event in August. And whereas Reese shined in the national spotlight on ESPN when she hit the second-most home runs of any one round, any one round, boy or girl, in the Little League World Series home run contest. While she didn't win, Reese won the respect for herself and national attention for her hometown. And whereas, we thank Reese for the positive attention she brought to Reno, and will continue to root for our home run hitting hometown hero," it's a mouthful, "as she works to achieve her dream of playing in the College World Series. Now, I therefore, Devin Reese, on behalf of Hillary Shevy, Mayor of the City of Reno, Nevada, do declare December 6th as Reese Madder Day in and for the City of Reno."
Hey.
Mayor Madder, can I hand this to you, and then welcome you and your family to the podium if you'd like to say a few words?
And as they're coming up, just to get this in brief. So, if you all captured this, Reese was in the international spotlight this summer on ESPN at the Little League World Series, where she competed in the home run hitting contest, which is amazing. And she was a terrific representative of Reno with her talent. She won our region, she won our state, she won the Western Region. I mean, you have to go through all those steps to get to this national spotlight. So, I just want to thank you for being here. Would you like to say a few words?
Do you want to say anything? No?
No. That's a no.
This is Tom Madder, her father. I would just like to thank the City Council and the mayor for coming about this and thinking of a great opportunity and unique, and I think this will be something she'll really appreciate down the road. She's a very driven girl with very high aspirations and high goals, and I think you'll see a lot of her down the road somewhere, you know, representing and providing, you know, a spotlight for Reno in the future as well. So, thank you very much.
Okay, fantastic. Well, as a young person who played sports with my three brothers, I was pressed into every sport, but never reached your type of level, I highly congratulate you, and what a special honor for Reno, and what a great representative for Nevada. I want to invite you up here if you'd like to sit and hear some of our public comment, or you and your parents can remain in the audience, your choice.
You could go up there for about, if you'd like, for about 15. I have an ownership group in town.
Okay, so, do you want to come up for a few minutes? Okay, all right. So, we have done the Pledge of Allegiance, we've done our roll call. We're going to move into public comment, and for those who might not have been in the room, I'm going to say again, because we have so many speakers signed up today, we're going to try to stick to about a minute per person. And I know we have quite a few members of HUG High School, is that my understanding? And I'd like to start with them first. So, Mickey, I don't know if you have a group that way. Yes? Or would you like someone to go before you so you can see how it's done? Maybe we should do it that way. So, anyway, why don't you just read out the first speaker? Let us know.
Thank you so much. Madam Vice Mayor, our first item today is public comment. Members of the public may hear, observe, and provide public comment virtually by registering through the following link, which can be found on reno.gov/meetings, HTTPS, colon, forward slash, forward slash, L-I-N-K-S, period, R-E-N-O, period, G-O-V, forward slash, three, R-T-F-Y-C-S. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to one to one and a half minutes per person, and may pertain to matters both on and off the council's agenda. Council may not take action upon any matter not agendized on today's agenda. When you're called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. For those participating in chambers, in accordance with Council Rules 6.3.11, while in this room, please be respectful. Disrupted behavior from audience members like clapping, yelling, whistling, et cetera, which impede the meeting, may result in a warning issued by the presiding officer. If the behavior continues, you may be removed from chambers. If you're an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. And Madam Vice Mayor, we do have a couple of people that I believe were planned on going first, so if you're okay, I'll just do those couple, and then we'll transition into the HUG High School.
That is, and as you call up the first person, I also wanted to acknowledge, since we have so many students here today, that also in attendance, we have School Board Trustee Alex Woodley, representing the school board. So, glad to have you in the audience today, Trustee Woodley, so you can see performance here. Okay, please call the first name.
Thank you, Tracy Dean with Community Cats.
Hello to everyone. I am Tracy Dean, Director of Community Cats, which is a local nonprofit 501(c)(3) group that was formed in 1999. It is an honor to stand in this chamber today. On behalf of Community Cats, I am grateful for the support from the City of Reno. Mayor Shevy and Councilmember Breckus have deemed our grassroots nonprofit as a cause to financially support. We are also honored with a proclamation for Global Cat Day on October 16th. Our donations go directly into spay neuter services and promoting trap neuter and return. TNR is the globally recognized method of managing free-roaming cat populations, and is the first choice in Washoe County. Washoe Regional Animal Services is also a partner in whatever we can do to help them. Community Cats works to educate the public about TNR and demystify the process. Our residents want to do the right thing, and we need to help them understand and empower them to take action. We believe that the data of the entire county as a whole needs to be the focus, not just on what one group is doing. And with the continued support, we hope to get our TNR goals on track in our Washoe County to help more cats and more people in our community. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Dean, and as Chair of the Washoe County Animal Advisory Board, I'm so grateful for the work, and also for my colleagues' contributions to your efforts, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Markell, followed by Terry Brooks.
Good morning, City Councilmembers, City Mayor, and who the heck you are, I don't remember. Mayor?
This is our mayor for the day.
Hello. I was involved in a drunk driving accident back in 89, and I can't walk, or... I'm here just to show you people and warn you people what can happen if you drive with a drunk driver. A newspaper said I was a passenger, but we rolled, and I was in a coma, so I don't remember. Anyways, don't drink and drive or get in the car with a drunk driver, you could end up like me, and I'm a fruitcake. I just, okay, I'll let you go, bye.
All right, thank you so much, Mark.
Terry Brooks.
And then, do you want to do the followed by? Who's after Terry? Okay. Who is it?
Brenda Quiros.
Will follow, so Brenda, you might want to queue up. Okay, Terry.
I'll try to be quicker than usual. Good morning, it's me, Terry Brooks again, and today I'd like to engage in the topic of discrimination when it comes to economics and age. People who are elderly have not only made less wages, but their income is worth even less while he or she ages. They might get used to living with a lower income, but then they realize that they're on a fixed income. At least the elderly may be helped by Social Security, but because of inflation, they have more insecurity. The elderly have been used to wages that went up with the cost of living, but now they just can't keep up with the rising cost of living. Social Security can go up a little at a time, but it doesn't keep up with the cost of living that keeps going up all the time. And the older you are, the more you need health care, and as the price goes up, it's quite a burden to bear. Some elderly people can't hunt or fish anymore, or grow their own garden anymore. They have to shop for all their food as the prices go up even more. And sometime, and something else that keeps going up is the price of utilities, and it keeps going up more and more beyond the elderly's capabilities. So, if you can't take care of your house anymore, then they may find a place to rent. It won't be near as much work, but their income becomes less than they're spent. And some housing owners won't rent to the elderly because they might die while living there. That's a form of discrimination that certainly is not fair. The elderly people's vision may be impaired, but the one thing that they can see is that money sure ain't worth what it used to be. We all know that eventually, everyone will die, but helping the elderly to stay alive is certainly worth a try. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today, and I hope I live long enough to come back here with more to say. Wow.
All right, thank you, Terry, very impressive. And then, just for those in the audience that are going to speak, as the clerk calls your name, if you could come up to the chair, she's going to say who's next. This will just help us proceed, so.
Brenda Quiros, followed by Abigail Olivares.
Okay.
Good afternoon, my name is Brenda Quiros. I'm from Proctor R. HUG High School, and I've come to discuss domestic violence. And as we all know, domestic violence is a destructive issue that knows no boundaries to age, race, or socioeconomic status. So, it could really affect anyone. So, it's important to understand the severity of this issue, because the impact of domestic violence goes way beyond immediate physical harm. Sorry?
You're doing great.
Thank you. So, I suggest community outreach programs and better housing for victims. I've noticed is a huge issue, and I say we should go directly to schools to teach younger people what a safe and healthy relationship looks like, so it can help our community in the future. And I think we should retaliate against social norms that contribute to perpetual abusive relationships. Thank you.
All right, well said, thank you.
Abigail Olivares, followed by Jimmy Bedio.
So, Jenny, you might want to come up to the front row seat here.
Okay, good morning, my name is Abigail, and I'm also here with-
Can you pull the mic a little closer? It bends all around, yeah.
There we go, okay. I'm also here with HUG, and I would like to talk about the homelessness population that we have in the city. So, as of April 18, 2023, there's said to be a homeless count of 1,845 people. That many people who don't have security, that many people who can't afford much stuff due to their current status, and some of those who are unhealthy, but they choose not to go to, like, a hospital or anything, because that is at expense just at that. And Reno does have opportunities for them, but I feel like we're not doing as much as we could be doing to help those, because, like I said, there's still 1,000 out there who do need help. And I feel like we could be putting more into it, like, we could be grabbing a few of them and helping them get a job, or we could be teaching them jobs, because there's 100-plus jobs, businesses that are needed employees. And we could teach them those jobs so quickly, and they could have already a steady income from just that, and that could help so much already. And also, oh, sorry. We should just be making sure that they're informed, that they have a whole bunch of opportunities for them, that they can have, and we should try to ensure them a better life, so that they won't have to be living on the streets, especially nowadays, when it gets really cold for them to be outside. Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you so much, good job.
Thank you.
Jimmy Bedio, followed by Arlene Lopez Salgado.
And Arlene, if you could come up to that front row again.
Hello, my name is Jimmy Bedio, I'm from Proctor R. HUG High School. Today, I stand before you to talk about the critical need for better police training in our communities. Our society is trusting the responsibility of assuring public safety, upholding justice, and maintaining order. However, recent events have shown the urgent need for improvement in the training protocols for our police force. First and foremost, enhanced training is important to make a police force that is better equipped to handle diverse situations. Policing is a job with many aspects that requires officers to navigate a lot of challenges, from de-escalating tense situations to handling mental health crises with empathy and understanding. Comprehensive training programs can provide officers with the skills and knowledge needed to address these complex scenarios effectively. In my personal experience, I was involved in an accident on August 2nd, 2023, where I was on the scene of a car crash where my friend passed away. I had nothing to do with it. My car did not come in contact with her car. The police still took my car in a wrongful way for evidence. I haven't gotten any updates, and the officer that was just there, that was there, just stopped answering my calls. If police had better training, they would have made sure. I was always informed of what would have happened, of what would happen to my car. This has been an ongoing personal issue, I have received zero updates on. In conclusion, the call for better police training is not a critic of the brave men and women who dedicate their lives to keeping our community safe. Instead, it is a recognition that investing their training is an investment in the safety.
Great job, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All of your messages are resonating loud and clear. Our next speaker?
Arlene Lopez Salgado, followed by Sofia Fregoso-Puentes.
Again, Sophie, if you could come up.
Hello, people of the Reno City Council. My name is Arlene Lopez, and I am a senior at HUG High School here today to speak about gun violence in our city of Reno. As you may or may not know, we have a big problem with people who have possession of a firearm. This year, we have 17 cases of violent crime murders, and 58.8% of those firearm, of those are firearm-related. Along with that, 76.2% of the offenders are males, and 23.8% are females. Gun violence is a serious issue that involves the use of firearms to cause harm or injury, including death. It can have devastating effects on individuals, families, and communities. The psychological impact of gun violence can also be profound, leading to post-traumatic stress disorder, anxiety, and depression. Additionally, communities affected by gun violence may experience increased fear, decreased trust, and a sense of insecurity. It can also have economic consequences, such as increased healthcare costs and loss of productivity. Addressing gun violence requires a comprehensive approach that focuses on prevention, intervention, and support for those affected. We all play a role in creating safer communities, so by working together, we can strive to make a change and reduce the occurrence of gun violence. The ideas I have for this action is we need to promote responsible gun ownership by using art murals to do public service announcements. We need to implement stricter gun control measures. For example, instead of doing background checks, do gun licenses that involve a mental health evaluation, criminal background check, and a gun safety course. We need to invest in mental health resources to help prevent gun violence, such as increasing awareness of or increasing access to mental healthcare facilities. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Arlene, thank you so much, great message.
Sofia Fregoso-Puentes, followed by Jaclyn Ruiz.
Jaclyn, if you can come up.
Hello, good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. My name is Sophia, and I'm currently a senior at HUG High School, and I am here to talk to you to discuss the critical issues that affect our community. The need for more affordable housing. Hard-working individuals and families find themselves struggling to secure a place they can call a home, and the fear of reality, having to deal with unaffordable housing, leads to homelessness. When we address the housing crisis, we not only provide shelter, but also foster a stronger, more connected community. Though affordable housing is not just a moral imperative, it's an economic one. We strive to attract and skilled workforce, but it's crucial that we offer housing. We must collaborate with community leaders, developers, and policymakers, such as yourself, to fix practical situations. This could involve streamlining regulations to encourage construction of affordable units, developers to invest in affordable housing projects. Furthermore, we must explore innovative solutions like adaptive reuse of existing buildings, and sustainable design practices to create affordable homes. Creating, sorry, community, creating a community where everyone, regardless of their income, can find a place to call a home. Together, we can build more inclusive community for generations to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, well done. You're all striking on issues that are dear to our heart.
Jaclyn Ruiz, followed by Betsy Arana.
Hi, good morning, my name is Jaclyn Ruiz, I'm a senior at HUG High School, and I'm here to talk to you guys about the importance of improving our city's sidewalks and crosswalks, to make them better and safer for everyone. The sidewalks and crosswalks play a crucial role in ensuring our safety. However, many of our sidewalks are in despair, posing hazards to pedestrians, especially children, the elderly, and individuals with disabilities. Uneven surfaces, surfaces, cracks, and obstructions, and the light abundance not working can lead to accidents and injuries that could be easily prevented by investing in better and safer sidewalks. We can create more walkable and an inclusive community. It would not only enhance the safety of our residents, but also encourage activity, healthier lifestyles, and it would make our city more appealing to visitors. Stuff could be more accessible, boosting our local economy. In my research, I've come across successful initiatives in other cities that have implemented innovative solutions to address sidewalk changes, from utilizing durable materials to incorporating proper lighting and accessibility features. These cities have shown that investing in safer sidewalks is a wise and beneficial decision. Thank you for your time, and I hope you could look into it.
Thank you so much. You're, as you come up, the next person, you're going to want to watch these back. Everything's videoed, so you can actually see what a great message is you're delivering. Go ahead.
Good morning, everyone, my name is Betsy Arana. Today, I want to talk about an issue that affects many of us-
You might want to pull the mic just a little closer.
... affordability in Reno, Nevada. As we all know, finding an affordable place to live in can be quite a challenge these days. So, why are housing so expensive in Reno? Well, there are a few reasons. Firstly, the economic population, growing population, economic development in the area have increased the demand of housing. With more people looking for homes, the supply becomes limited, driving up prices. More for real estate investment have moved up in Reno with a focus of higher-end properties. While this brings development and opportunities, it also contributes to the rising prices, making it even harder for people to find affordable housings. There are ways we can improve housing affordability. One key solution is to encourage the construction of more affordable housing units by providing motivation to developers, or partnering with them. We can increase the supply of homes that are within reach of people. Other approach is to protect existing affordable housing units. We can implement policies and prevent the change of these units into higher-priced properties. This way, we perceive affordability to certain neighborhoods and prevent the discipline of lower-income residents. By providing a helping hand, we can improve individuals and families to achieve their dream of owning a home. We can create a more exclusive and affordable housing market in Reno, Nevada. Together, let's work towards a future where everyone has a place they can call home. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Esmeralda Saramillo, followed by Anastasia De Segala.
Okay, and Anastasia, if you can come up, and remember, if your name's called next, come up to the front row.
Hello, good morning, and thank you for having me here today. My name is Esmeralda Saramillo, and I have an issue I want to address with you today about our city. I think we need more parks and more skate parks. Parks are such a great way to bring the community together and provide a space for everyone to enjoy nature and outdoor activities. With more parks, people can have a place to relax, exercise, and have fun with friends and family. Plus, parks can improve the overall quality of life by promoting physical and mental well-being. Skate parks would be awesome for our city, and skateboarding is such a popular sport and exciting sport. And having more skate parks would provide a space, and designated space, for skaters to practice their skills and have fun. Skate parks can also foster a sense of community and camaraderie among skateboards, encouraging them to connect and learn from each other. Plus, having more skate parks can attract visitors and tourists who are interested in skateboarding, which can bring economic benefits to the city. One possible solution that would be done is to collaborate with local government officials and community organizations to identify suitable areas for park development. This could involve repurposing underlying spaces or acquiring new land park construction. Additionally, seeking funding through grants and public-private partnerships could help finance and creation and maintenance of these parks. By involving the community and working together, we can make a strong case for the need for more parks. This is all I have for you guys, I really hope you guys can take some interest in my topic today, and thank you for listening.
Hey, great job.
Anastasia De Segala, followed by Omer.
Hello, good afternoon, Reno City Council and everyone else in the room today. My name is Anastasia Segala, and I am a senior here at HUG High School, and I'm here to discuss the housing crisis we are facing today in Nevada. Currently, the average Nevada citizen working the minimum wage of $11.25 an hour would require 82 hours of work a week to afford a modest one-bedroom rental, assuming a 25% of income for rent, which would leave only $300 to afford something like this. Wages over the past year have increased by .75 an hour, providing the employee with only an extra $135 a month before taxes. This doesn't put a dent in the increased cost of living over the past- This doesn't put a dent in the increased cost of living over the past year. Rent has increased by a hundred and thirty-two dollars a month. On top of the cost of rent, the average grocery bill has gone up by eighty-five dollars a month, while the cost of energy has gone up over two hundred dollars per month. As most Americans work for large corporations and it is large corporations who own rentals, the corporations are monopolizing the profit on the rentals as well as profiting off the underpaid labor of their employees. The wages increases versus the cost of living has left a deficit of two hundred and eighty-two dollars, which doesn't even include the cost of transportation, which has increased over three hundred dollars a month. Coming from a two-parent, two-income household, my family has found it difficult most months to pay bills and provide groceries comfortably. After spending seven years in the same low-income apartment, my parents began the homebuying journey in early 2020. Due to the lower middle-class wages and debt-to-income ratio, they were told the process would be more difficult to receive a loan sufficient to purchase.
Did you wrap up your final sentence there?
They, they were told the process would be more difficult to receive a loan sufficient to purchase a home for a family of our size.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for being here.
Omar, followed by Nakia Lara.
Hi, my name is Omar and I stand in front of you to talk about the safe, the public safety and the homeless problem that we have to deal with in downtown. You wonder and ask yourself, is downtown even safe anymore? Can you, can you enjoy the beauty of downtown and not see a homeless tenant or someone screaming at you for asking for a piece of change? Can we enjoy the events that go such as Art Town, Hotter Guss Nights, and all the exciting events that happen in downtown with someone, without someone yelling at you? And how about the people that have to go to downtown on an everyday basis to work or the commuters or the tourists that come down here? Or the people that are at the bus stations that might have, and that are being worried about having their purse stolen or getting yelled at by who knows what? How can we solve these problems? And I know some of these people on the streets have had their mental problems and issues, but how can we get them help? The real question is, how can we get them to rehab in wherever mental facilities are needed? And, and especially since with the weather dropping now and Christmas and New Year's are coming. And everyone's gonna be with their families enjoying the holidays and everything like that. And you just know that there's someone there on the streets not wondering what they are. And so you just wonder what you can do to help. It's really sad to see Reno to be mistreated and seeing it as San Francisco to a lot of America here, especially to the daily, day-to-day Reno citizen. That's all. Thank you.
Great job. Important topic.
Nakia Lara, followed by Taqua Almaphani.
Hi, my name is Nakia Lara and I'm from-
Can you pull your mic down so you can speak in? Right? A little bit more. Right to your mouth. There you go.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Yeah, great.
Hi, my name is Nakia Lara. I'm from Proctor R. HUG High School. Today, I wanted to draw attention to an issue that affects half of our population, the affordability of feminine healthcare products. It's a topic that often lingers in the shadows, yet its impact on the well-being and dignity of countless individuals is profound. The time has come to address the financial barriers that prevent many from accessing essential feminine hygiene products. First and foremost, menstrual hygiene is a matter of basic human dignity. No one should be forced to compromise their health and well-being due to prohibited costs of necessary products. Menstruation is a natural biological process and access, and access to affordable feminine hygiene products is a fundamental right that we must safeguard for all individuals regardless of the economic circum- circumstances.
You're doing great.
The financial burden placed on individuals and families is significant for many. The recurring cost of menstrual products can be a strain on already tight budgets. This economic barrier not only affects the physical health of those who may resort to using inadequate alternatives, but also contributes to a border cycle of inequality, limiting education, professional opportunities. Affordable feminine healthcare products are not just a matter of convenience. They are a cornerstone of gender equality when individuals have access to affordable menstrual products. They are better equipped to participate fully in education, employment, and other aspects of daily life. Breaking down this econ- economic barriers is not only a matter of fairness, but a step towards creating a more inclusive and equitable society. And that's all I have.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So impressed.
Taqua Almaphani, followed by Emily Astrid Lopez Tabarez.
Very good.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Taqua Almaphani. I'm a senior student at HUG High School and I'm here today addressing a problem in Reno, which is homelessness. We need to help homeless and blind people by giving them jobs and good homes for better, better lives. And have story with homeless people that's one never forget. Around two months, my, my friend and we're going to homes downtown. We saw a young man sitting in the wall and he's laying down. And he's drinking a brown bag and he looks sad and mad. And we turned to my friend and I said to her, let's go buy for him a McDonald's. And we went there back and we closed to him and we said, hey, we'll get for you McDonald's food. And we tried to buy food for them, said, valued words and to us. We need to find ways to make them feel safe and welcome, eh, better of our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Emily Astrid Lopez Tabarez, followed by Kai.
Good morning. My name is Astrid Lopez. I'm a senior attending HUG High. Today, I'm here to speak up about an issue that is very evident here in Reno, which is youth homelessness and how we can prevent it. When I was in middle school, I was on summer break and I heard my mom and my grandma talking about something. They were very worried and it had turned out that my cousin had gone and kicked out of her house. And my grandma found her sleeping on a bench on the streets. Luckily, my mom and I took her in with my other cousin, but it's not that way for other children. Sometimes they don't have the support from their families. And I think that it's very dangerous because it leads homeless youth to take extreme measures to get by on the streets day by day. And that could be your family member that's a minor, that could be your child one day who, for whatever reason, may not have the support that they need one day if they ever do end up on the streets. So I think that we could be doing more to, to prevent this. We could do that by managing the city's funds and offering free services. So why not take abandoned businesses and turn them into places where homeless youth know that they can get a warm meal while sharing their stories and building connections with other youth that are currently undergoing the same situation? This could tie into also having mental health, like, diagnosis required in, like, yeah, we can prevent years of homelessness as well as years of addiction. It's not too late. A lot of people think that homeless people are intimidating, but I think that it's just the years of struggles of their living situation reflected on their faces. Thank you.
All right. Great job. Thank you.
Kai, followed by Javier Sarado.
Hello, my name is Kai. I am from HUG. I'm not originally from Reno. I am from California. And out there, their car laws and modification laws are strict, but they compensate for it with tracks and events. Out here, we don't really have much and we don't have a track. So I'm just here to bring forward the idea to start building a track so we can take the safeties off of the streets and bring it to the track. Cause I've seen the danger on the streets. I've seen the street races. It's not safe. I don't agree with it. I would much prefer it be on a track. That's all I have for you today.
Wow, well, I haven't commented, but I am gonna comment. I had to get very engaged in street racing and intersection takeovers last year when they really started up here. And I was gonna save this to the end, but I am hoping for an invitation to your class to follow up on a couple of these topics that you've all brought up. So thanks for being here.
I'll see you there. Have a good day.
Javier Sarado, followed by Jimena Mejorada.
Hi, good morning. My name is Javier Sarado. Today I stand before you as I am a senior at HUG High School. Raised in the city of Reno my whole life, I have felt that Reno is lacking a festival for the Latin community, including Mexican, Colombian, Salvadorian, Puerto Rican, and all those other Latin cultures. To display these amazing cultures, if we were able to have a parade or any get-together where these cultures could feel safe to express themselves and their community, it would be fondly amazing. We display love, family prosperity, and fam- and a friendly environment. Hosting a fest- a Latin festival in Reno could be a fantastic, could be fantastic for several reasons. It could celebrate the rich cultural heritage of Latin America, bring diverse communities together, showcase vibrant music, dance, and food, and offer an opportunity for locals to immerse themselves in a different cultural experience. Additionally, it could attract tourists and promote cultural exchange and contribute to the city's cultural diversity inclusivity. It'll, it'll show the gratuity for the Latin people in this town as we feel less, as we don't get a safe space or environment to express ourselves. The closest parade that we have are the church walks that we have closest to our church, as in Sun Valley or in Reno. We want a safe place and time to express our love for our culture. This is why I feel like the city of Reno should have a festival or event showcasing the true love of the Latin community and enjoyer culture and backgrounds. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Great suggestions.
Jimena Mejorada, followed by Kiefer Fausten Abbas.
Hello, my name is Jimena Mejorada. And I wanna talk about the issue of littering in our city. A, a pressing issue that affects the beauty and well-being of our community. As we know, Reno is known for the stunning lands- landscape and vibrant atmosphere. But is, it is no, facing a challenge that requires our collective attention and a- actions. The impact of litter on the natural beauty discarded, bottles, wrappers, and not only tarnish the aesthetic, but pose an, a threat to our environment and wildfire. We must recognize the consequence of our actions. Littering disgrates air and comedic, eh, and water quality, jeopardize the health, the health of ecosystem and, and dangers that does, the virus species that call this region home. Our commitment to perceiving the pristine charm of Reno demands a change in behavior. So let us keep our streets, parks, and waterways clean. Simple acts like properly disposing of waste and encouraging others to do the same can, can make a significant difference. Community cleanup initiatives and educational programs can raise awareness, fostering an essence of pride in maintaining the cleanliness of our beloved city. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Heartfelt.
Kiefer Fausten Abbas, followed by Caitlin Zara.
Good morning, members of the City Council. I've come today to bring an issue to light, pedestrian safety. With each passing day in our little city, we welcome more people. The more people we have, the more walkers we gain. As a frequent pedestrian myself, I sometimes do not feel safe to even commute to my school by foot, even though I live less than a mile away. There were times where I had to evade an oncoming car because they were being reckless. I'm not alone on this matter. I have witnessed other students hesitating to get to their bus stop or the other side of the street because there are too many cars and too little windows to cross. At times, it feels like we are the chicken from Costi Road. This main issue lies on El Rancho Drive. Crossing from either Divid Drive or Wild Creek is dangerous. This should be prevented as there are two bus stops that are frequently used on either sides of the streets that are listed. Not only is there a slope creating a blind spot for both pedestrians and drivers, there is no posted speed limit near. And at night, there is but one singular dim lamp post, making commute at night very unsafe. This is only one of the many unsafe areas for pedestrians. I suggest that we add crosswalks and hawk beacons. For those that don't know, hawk beacons are the flashes that pedestrians can press and it'll light up. And I'd like to propose speed limit signs and more lights where they are needed. Thank you for your time and attention. I hope you all have a great day and I hope you don't have, have to wait for an accident to occur before a change could happen.
Thank you so much. Well said.
Caitlin Zyra, followed by Angel Abarka.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Adienta and I just wanted to talk about our Reno healthcare system. When I think about healthcare, I want to think about people getting the help they need when they need it at an affordable price. But with mine and my family's personal experiences, that sadly cannot be the case. Growing up, I was always confused on why my family never went to the hospital whenever they obviously needed the help. But now that I'm at a more knowledgeable age, I realize that it's not as easy to go to the hospital, call the ambulance, or go to the ER as the cartoons I used to watch portrayed it to be. The base rate of calling an ambulance in the US is about one thousand seven hundred dollars starting fee, not including medication and equipment use. And without insurance, people who need inhalers would have to pay around three hundred dollars just to breathe properly. Not to mention, it is around six hundred dollars to just visit the doctor, also without insurance. And there was just many more cases where people are charged an amount they usually cannot pay for. With that information, I now understand why me and my family aren't the only ones actively avoiding healthcare. Many who are injured refuse to ride the ambulance and would refuse medical treatment and instead suffer an injury then suffer in debt. They go so far as to jump out and moving ambulances so they aren't charged with the medical bills and the amount of cost to pay for ambulance pickup. And at this rate, it's something I might even do as well if I am ever in that situation. So if there is any way we can help solve this dilemma or at least make it better for our citizens, it starts with listening. Thank you, thank you for hearing out my concerns and have a good rest of your day. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Angel Abarka, followed by Ashley Martinez.
Good morning, Council. My name is Angel Abarka. I'm seventeen years old and here to talk about mental health. Mental health has affected society in massive ways, whether that would be from poor conditions in life, loss of a relationship, self-isolation, and most importantly, suicide thoughts. These ideas can alter how we react to actions, feeling towards others, or how we respond or act. With mental health, society can expect lack of sleep and alcohol and drug usage. According to many sites that, well, many sources, forty-eight of adults suffer from anxiety or depressive disorder here in Nevada. As well as the present, as well as the present, Nevada is ranked the twelfth state led to deaths, led to suicide. Wouldn't it be nice if someone could talk to someone? Unfortunately not, due to the cost of talking to someone, like a therapist, being too much for someone to access. I've seen people be in a bad situation, including myself. I have suffered from mental, uh, mental health problems. Luckily, I was given the opportunity to talk to my mother, who is a social worker, who really got me out of the idea to not think like that and provide me the help I was given. But many others aren't given that way. So now I ask, what is one thing that we can do to make it better? For instance, we can promote and push organizations and involve people who really care about helping others, as well as lowering the cost of therapists, what, the cost of talking to someone. Cause, uh, due to research, it is around like a hundred forty to a hundred and fifty dollars an hour just to speak with someone. I would rather see people be happy in the, in everywhere compared to people in the streets, you know, suffering and not being able to speak to someone. Thank you for your time.
Fantastic. I want him to come up. Okay. And then I think our clerk's gonna call that person after you.
My name is Ashley Martinez and I wanna talk about homelessness. Homelessness is a complex issue with various contributing factors. In Reno, we see that homelessness is an issue here. Every day while we're driving through downtown or the Paradise Park on El Rancho and many more places, there are many homelessness, homeless people suffering every day. So I bring this to you today because there are ways to help those in need, such as affordable housing innovatives. So I bring this to you today because there are ways to help those in need, such as affordable housing, innovatives, supportive services, community outreach and education, collaboration with NGOs, job training and employment programs, emergency, emergency shelters, services, policy advocacy. By combining efforts across multiple fronts, the city of Reno council can contribute significantly to reduce and preventing homelessness in our communities. That's all. Thank you.
Wow, very well said. Thank you.
Francisco Javier Mendoza Mata, followed by Kitzia Garcia. I'm counting. Hold on just a second.
Uh, hi, uh, good morning, everyone. Uh, my name is Francisco Mendoza and I'm here to talk about violence. Uh, violence has become a major problem to our society, to our community. Uh, every, every day I wake up, I, I woke up, I look at my phone just to see if I know five bit up at my school or just to write about another shoot at, at the country. Yeah. Uh, we live now in a culture of violence, uh, yeah. Where if you, if someone doesn't like you, he can put you in the face or shoot you as well. Uh, yeah, uh, violence has become a major problem and we are solving now. Uh, to address that, uh, we're gonna we need, we need comprehensive reforms to get, oh shit, sorry. We need comprehensive reforms in our education systems. From uh, went to foresting, uh, dialogue, understanding and tolerance. Uh, we must invest on mental, uh, mental health and bring, bring it to the people who need it. And in that way, we, we can address that. Yeah, that's it.
Alright. Thank you so much. Important topic.
Kitzia Garcia, followed by America Estrada.
Hello, good morning, members of the city council. My name is Kitzia Garcia and today I want to talk about the difference in education in different countries. Have you ever wondered what it would be like to study in a different country? Have you ever wondered what education is like in a different country? I have lived it. The education at my school in Leon Guanajuato, Mexico and the education at Procter and Hyde High School is not unlike it. In Mexico, you must pay to have a decent education. And in the United States, education, education is mostly free since you don't have to worry about having any money to pay for tuition at the end of the month. Something you've done for the benefit of students is to give them clearly focus on the profession they want to practice in the future. An example of this is that I went to study medicine and thanks to you, I was able to take la- take a class such as an army. Something that bothered me when I arrived to the country was to see the diff- diversity of cultures that were in my school. Something that benefited me in my process of adapting to a new country and language was that the school will have a class in which they help you to start learning the language. Something that I'd like you to adapt at school is a specific classes for each profession. As I said before, being able to take a class, classes that are focused on what we want to practice and professional guide us when making our decision of what we want to dedicate ourselves in the future. With this, it's more than clear that we are very fortunate to have the education we receive. Thanks to this, we have many opportunities that will help us achieve our goals in the future. I want to thank you for taking our time into co- and to, for thank you. I want to thank you for taking our opinion into account and for taking the time to listen to my speech.
America Estrada, followed by Gabriel Mata.
Um, my name is America Estrada. Uh, today speaks Spanish. Buenos dias to all the personnel that we accompany. My name is America Estrada. I'm a student of Hood High School. The topic that I'm going to talk about today is helping for the young people. As we know, in the city of Reno, Nevada, there are many people who live on the street. Este, pero we've been stopped thinking what it is to live on the street. How do they spend their days? What do they do? What do they eat? Este, many of them have suffered accidents, no, no can walk. Some of them are on bicycles. They've been hit and they don't have a leg, a hand, something like that. And more now that they're coming, the pardon, now that they're coming, the snows. For the low temperatures, many of them die. Since they don't have a house to sleep in, they don't have the appropriate clothing for this time. Boots, trousers, that kind of stuff. Then they tend to have illnesses like pulmonary and things for the style, illnesses mortal. So for that, by not getting medical attention, die. Este, many of them have months, even years, without having a personal care, like brushing their teeth, taking a bath and things for the style. And yes, of course, there are foundations to help them, but they're very few. I think approximately twenty foundations exist in Reno, Nevada. And approximately, there are one thousand six hundred and five young people in the city of Reno, Nevada. So I think that's not enough. My suggestion or what I think is better for this situation is to put more foundations for the young people. Even more foundations, where they can go to sleep in the winter, where they can go to eat, where they can go to bathe, brush their teeth, do some personal care, where they get medical attention. This or give them also, um, some clothing for, de- depends on the season and boots. Or in other words, also these foundations, they need to have workshops where, like carpentry, there are things for the style. And also that they get psychological help and help them get out of the world of drugs, since many of them are there.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Muchas gracias for being here. Thank you so much.
Gabriela Mata, followed by Erica Hernandez.
Buenos dias, personnel that we accompany. My name is Gabriela Mata. Today I'm here to talk to you about drug addiction at a early age. But I don't want to mention the types of drugs that exist, not even which are the most consumed, a higher or lower quantity. I just want to highlight the grave problem that impacts our society and more even affects adolescents. Today, the drug addiction in adolescents is a problem that is affecting easily our social, cultural, cultural and family. The main objective that I planned to come and talk about is to educate the society and at the same time create places where we have education for the future of all the young people and families that are being affected by this situation. Above all, convince those who accept that this is a problem where we are all involved. When we get to adolescence, we suffer many changes and experiment new paths of life. So that if we face a problem, it's easy to take the wrong decision. So today, the drugs are more accessible. So I consider it fundamental that we all cooperate to solve this problem. I ask you to recapacitate and reflect that we're in a very miserable situation. But also let us realize that we still have time to solve it. Maybe not at all, but any act of volunteer makes a difference. Thank you for your attention.
Muchas gracias.
Erica Hernandez, followed by Winnie Dowling, Dowling.
Good morning, my name is Erica Hernandez and today I'm here to talk about mental health in Spanish. Mental health is a very important issue that affects a lot of people all over the world. Since we all have had negative emotions in some moment of our lives. But it's essential to care about our mental health to have a full and balanced life. This involves having a good self-esteem, managing stress, being healthy, having healthy relationships and being able to face and overcome the challenges of life. It's normal, normal to have moments of sadness, anxiety or concern. But when these feelings turn into negative and affect our daily life, it's important to seek help. It's crucial to clear the stigma associated with the mental health problems and promote empathy and comprehension. We all deserve support and compassion when we face emotional difficulties. I think one of the things that can help our mental health is to maintain social connections, to find activities that inspire us, to establish healthy limits and above all, learn to say no. If you or someone knows you're struggling with your mental health, we'd like to seek professional help, to talk to friends or family, to trust and practice self-care. That's all and thank you for your time.
Okay, muchas gracias. So well said.
Uh, and I apologize, Mr. Jensen, if you had approached.
Yeah, Mr. Jensen, if I could call you up, I know it's unexpected. I just wanted to thank you for having your students here. Um, I wanted to give you a couple of comments, um, and I would like an invitation, if you wouldn't mind, at some point to your class. But um, I found the presentations articulate, pointed, timely, very relevant. I think the best ones, um, and uh, really spoke from personal experience. And they made a very clear ask to the council. Um, that's always very helpful to us when we understand what change people would like and what they think we could do to help that. So I've got to commend you for the work you've done, the coaching you've done, obviously, uh, with these students to pre- prepare them for today. Um, it was very impactful. I took quite a few notes. I would love to respond or discuss this in more detail, but we can in public comment. Um, I wanted to ask, I didn't know if any other council member wanted to say some, a word or two.
Mr. Jensen, thank you so much. Um, I've already arranged to meet with you, so that's exciting. Um, but what I wanted to do is encourage all your students to consider uh, Co- uh, Coach O'Brien, Sam O'Brien, is the debate coach over at HUG. And man, a lot of those students would be well served to be in there because they are articulate, they are passionate. Uh, when I, I'm just impressed by all of your students. It's really, really a neat thing to see. And I know that Sam is working to build a program there and so send him his way. They'll have a lot of fun with it.
Did you have any comments for us or thoughts to leave us with?
I just try to teach my students about government. And the most important part about government is those first three words of the preamble of the United States Constitution and our Nevada Constitution. It's we the people. And this is how we engage as the people. And that's my guiding philosophy for teaching government and this is where it is. And we'll be going to the school district next on the twelfth, so.
Oh, wow. Okay. Well, it does happen here. Every two weeks, we have all kinds of people come and speak to us, give us some great ideas. I know many of us hold public participation in our government as a very key, dear principle. And I've got to echo the words of my colleague about the level of achievement that your students just displayed was truly phenomenal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jensen, would you just state your name for the record?
Uh, my name is Tyler Johnson.
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 Oh.
Got it.
J O H N S O N.
Thank you so much.
No worries.
Okay. Thank you for being here and thank you for bringing your, um, students today.
Alright, well, thank you for giving them a floor.
Yeah, you bet. Alright, thank you.
Winnie Dowling, followed by Jeffrey Brooks.
Good morning, Winnie Dowling. First can I say I'm a proud graduate of HUG High School, class of nineteen eighty. I know that was a really long time ago. I wish I would have gotten a chance to do this, to go before the city council. That would have been awesome. I also live in, um, Ward Three, but I'm here today to talk to you about the Nevada Small Business Development Center. We're in the College of Business at UNR and I have the results from our Summer Small Business Challenges Survey. This is a survey of small businesses, people starting businesses and people interested or people that already have small businesses and what they are facing. It's statewide. We have twelve offices around the state, so we asked everyone around the state and this was pushed out by all of our chambers, including the Reno Chamber. So first of all, since I'm from UNR, I'm at UNR. Quiz, anyone care to guess what the greatest challenge is to people interested in starting a business? And it's okay if you don't want to say anything. It's, it's funding.
Yeah.
Getting funding and seventy-one percent of our businesses have, oh shoot, trouble.
You're, you've got thirty more seconds. Keep going.
Have trouble, um, finding funding, you know, ba- banks don't want loan interest rates are high. Existing businesses, the, um, the top two challenges are, um, adapting to inflation and also finding new customers. So I have here just a one-page handout for you and I wanted to leave that with you because there are other challenges too. I think it's important for our city council to understand what those challenges are, what our businesses are facing. And I also wanted to thank Councilwoman Martinez because he helped us put together a class, um, a couple of months ago to people interested in starting businesses in Spanish. And we had eighty-five that attended and it just really made a difference to teach in Spanish. And we followed that up with a marketing class. So remember that we are a resource for your constituents, for your businesses, and we are here to help your small businesses.
Winnie, thanks so much. And just as a note, uh, probably half the council or more have their own small business and have experienced what you're speaking of. So thanks for being here today.
Thank you and I will leave this.
Jeffrey Brooks, followed by Bill Miller.
Hi, my name is Jeffrey Brooks. Appreciate the opportunity to talk to the council. Um, I live in Somerset and the first thing I wanted to say, I wanted to thank the city um, and the fire department for helping them get the funding. They have a three million dollar grant from the federal government for fire mitigation purposes. And um, I think it's very important that, um, you know, we give the city council and the fire department the recognition they deserve, helping us get this tremendous grant, which is going to be put to excellent use at mitigation of the fi- fi- fire stuff. Um, the issue which I wanted to bring up, because it's, to me, it seems like a very simple one, is Somerset has a plethora of wooden fences and privacy fences, none of which are fire-treated in any way and they will burn immensely. If you look at some of the major fires, not only here in Reno, but in other places like Colorado in recent years, the, the fire department has actually blamed the spread of the fire and the destructive nature of the fire and the fact that people have these wooden privacy fences, which cause, spread the fire from house to house up into the eaves. So in my mind, there's a very simple solution to this. All the wood which is used in privacy fences and, um, in the, um, split rail fences we have in Somerset should be fire-treated with a fire retardant of some description. There are very safe fire retardants which can be used, which will reduce the risk of fire immediately. So a simple thing for the council to do is to say that all new construction of wooden fences, privacy fences should be treated, done with fire-treated, fire-retardant-treated lumber. Thank you for my, your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Bill Miller.
Good morning, Reno Vice Mayor Reese. Potential someday Mayor Reese, not in the building. Council members, staff and fellow citizens. I'm Bill Miller, retired marketing creative and hospice chaplain, here to talk about the climate crisis. First, I want to acknowledge this council for proactively working on mitigating global heating in Reno. Particularly Councilwoman Durer for her work on urban forestry. One mature tree can lower the temperature underneath in summer by ten degrees or more. That is an enormous benefit as our average summer heat has already risen by nearly seven degrees since the nineteen seventies due to climate change. That said, far beyond our borders in Dubai, a kingdom built solely on oil, we are witnessing COP twenty-eight, an almost farcical climate summit. Is headed by Sultan Al-Jabbar, the CEO of Dubai State-Owned Oil and Gas Conglomerate. So the fox is not just guarding the hen house, it owns the hen house. More disturbing, COP twenty-eight stands for twenty-eight years of UN-sponsored climate summits, which have produced a lot of talk and at least a few impressive agreements, like the Paris Climate Accords in two thousand fifteen. That said, since its inception in nineteen ninety-five, global fossil fuel emissions have risen every year, gone up every year compared to the year prior, including during COVID, including during this year, twenty twenty-three. Every year, humanity continues to emit more fossil fuel pollution than the year before. It seems that globally, our leaders have entered into a suicide pact with complacency.
And Mr. Miller, I'm gonna ask you to wrap up. The buzzer didn't go, but.
Oh.
Thank you.
Oh, shoot. I was just getting to the best part.
Well, do your best part if you can get it into a couple minute, a couple seconds, please.
Yes, yes. Um, it's the holiday season. It's only a few weeks after all, so let's enjoy it. As you do, look around, observe all the precious treasures in your life, the children, family, friends, great meals together, your personal safety and security, your warm shelter and peaceful neighborhood, all bathed in love and hope. Tis the season. Then please return with a vengeance to not allow the blind greed of those so-called masters of the universe and most importantly, our own complacency to continue. of the universe, and most importantly, our own complacency, to continue to execute a global suicide pact that is still avoidable. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Miller. Madam Clerk, is that the end or is there more?
Madam Vice Mayor, that is the end of our public comment. We do not have any hands raised in the Zoom meeting, and so just for the record, I'd like to state that we received 22 comments. Oh, I'm sorry, Ian Anderson.
Okay, Mr. Anderson.
Good morning, my name is Ian Anderson, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am a youth athletic coach, and I serve on the boards of the High Sierra Lacrosse League and the Reno Youth Sports Association. I want to thank the council for passing the PROS Plan, a new master plan for Reno's Parks and Recreation was much needed. The process was inclusive and well-done, and I wanted to let the council know that the Reno Youth Sports Association and its member leagues and 11,000 families support the PROS Plan, especially the development of new athletic fields. Now the hard work begins, how do we fund the plan? A similar plan was developed in 2008 and left a languish due to the city's financial constraints. The gap analysis of the current PROS Plan highlights many of the same issues we faced in 2008, including a great shortage of athletic fields for the families of Reno to access and use. It's important that we find the will and be creative to bring the PROS Plan to fruition. If we did not, there will be essentially 20 years of inaction with no investment in our city's Parks and Recreation infrastructure. I think that you will agree with me that the families of Reno deserve better. On a related note, I wanted to comment that the staff of the Parks and Rec Department have been proactively working to improve our current athletic fields. Reno Youth Sports Association is greatly appreciative of these efforts. Our board met with Director Uli at last evening, and we look forward to supporting these departments' efforts. Specifically, we support the department's new plan for field maintenance, including field mowing and fertilizing, and we think the young athletes of Reno will greatly benefit from the upgraded field conditions that this new plan will create. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you so much for being here, Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Anderson, were you just appointed to the Parks and Recreation?
Yes, I was.
So you left that one out.
Kudos.
Congratulations on that one.
Kudos.
All right, Vice Mayor, so again, there are 22 comments that were received, which were general in nature, not directly associated with an item prior to 4:00 PM yesterday, December 5th. These comments were voicemail and/or written correspondence received via our Reno.gov online public comment form or by email to our office. Copies of these comments have been distributed to the Reno City Council and are available to the public on Reno.gov. 22 letters of concerns, and that will close out Item A3, General Public Comment.
All right, we're moving on to approval of the Agenda A4, and I am looking for a motion. I want to ask our city manager if there's anything we need to take out of order or delete.
Nothing out of order, depending on how consent goes, we might have a suggestion there.
All right, anything? Okay. All right, I've got a motion for approval from Councilmember Reese, second from Councilmember Taylor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously, and now we're on to approval of the minutes, and we have two minutes. Was that for both?
On A5-1 and A5-2.
All right, we have a motion for approval from Councilmember Reese.
And A5-3, I'm so sorry, Madam.
Yes, and a second from Councilmember Taylor. Are there any comments or amendations to the minutes?
Sorry, just to be clear, that was approving Item A5-1 through 3?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, and then, no comments. May I please register, if you approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously, and we're moving on to the consent agenda, and I'm going to start with Councilmember Breckus, is there anything you want to pull?
Yeah, I'd like to pull Item B8, Item B12, and Item B23.
Okay, B8, B12, and what was the last?
B23.
B23, okay. All right, Councilmember Martinez?
Nothing from me, Vice Mayor, thank you.
Okay, nothing from Councilmember Taylor?
Nothing from me, Madam Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Reese, nothing, I have nothing. Councilmember Ebert?
Councilmember Breckus pulled B8, but I'd also like to pull B16.
B16, okay, so let me just take a peek here. B8, B12, B23, that was, right? Let me just see here, and B16. All right.
Move to a screwball remaining other items.
A second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Reese, second from Councilmember Martinez. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously, and is there anything you would like to take out of order, Mr. Manager, hearing the items pulled?
Nope, we're all good.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, we'll start with Item B8, and I think that was pulled by Councilmember Breckus.
Yeah, can we get a staff report on this?
Yeah.
Excuse me, staff presentation?
We need a two-thirds. You sure? You know? Yes, you do. Okay. All right, whenever you're ready.
All right, good morning, excuse me, Madam Vice Mayor, council members, I'm Justin George, Senior Civil Engineer for the Public Works Department. I'm here to recommend that council award a construction contract to Artistic Fence Company for the National Bowling Stadium Fence Project in an amount not to exceed $59,032. This project was highlighted in the CIP Plan for the fiscal year 2324 and is in the budget book. Funds for this project come from the $2 room surcharge tax, and funding for this item was approved by the Capital Projects Surcharge Advisory Committee at their June 29, 2023 This image is an aerial of the downtown area with the bowling stadium shown in the center. To give reference to where the fence will be located, please direct your attention to that bluish-purplish-colored highlighted area. That is where the fence will be constructed at street level. This image is a street-level view of the open area under the national, under the fourth floor of the National Bowling Stadium between Plaza Street and the railroad trench. This fence will be constructed behind the sidewalk where that red outline is shown to replace the temporary fence that was put up to protect the, to protect the facility from the risk of damage. This image is of the non-scalable mini-mesh fence that is along the railroad trench adjacent to this area. The new fence for this project is the same type of fence, non-scalable mini-mesh, to match the style of fencing in this area. This project was bid competitively, and artistic fence was a little bitter. They are a local fencing contractor licensed in the state and have successfully completed projects for the city. That concludes my presentation.
All right, Councilmember Breckus, any questions?
Yeah, I do, and I did look in the CIP in the budget book and did see that this was an item that we budgeted this year. Could you bring up the slide, please? I also reviewed the minutes of the June 29 Surcharge Committee, which I don't sit on, but I have in the past, and the question I have is, I mean, it came in under budget because I think you budgeted $70,000, correct?
Correct.
The question I have is, what's the balance now in the surcharge fund?
I think as of September of this year, the balance is approximately $3 million.
$3 million, and I read, reread the statute for the use of the properties, and it's very broad, it's urban projects within the city of Reno, downtown. Is that your recollection also?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Okay, so I'm just highlighting my support for this, but I'm also stating that while we have a surcharge committee, we haven't budgeted any other money for this year. We have a $3 million budget or balance that can be used broadly in the entire downtown area. We have no obligations to the bowling conference to do anything, as far as I know, and I am not going to be in support, and I'm just giving fair notice because it is a high threshold for vote, until we have a conversation about the balance of that money here at this table. $3 million to spend through downtown is a big chunk of change, and I just don't want to see it come through on a consent agenda for something we haven't budgeted and something we haven't discussed. And I'm calling this out because of the June Surcharge Committee, $1.5 million staff recommended was for an east floor of the NBS, the bowling stadium, and that's a big chunk of change that takes half of the balance, and I have five projects in the downtown area that have been kind of on the queue, waiting for this money to become available once we did our obligations to bowling conference, and I'm just not going to be comfortable seeing staff show up with a bid, you know, here we have a million and a half to do this floor remodel, we want to bid, it's a hot, hot bid, ready to go, and we need the vote now. I want the discussion here about our priorities for that. It's not something I'm willing to delegate just to the surcharge committee because, you know, at the end of the day, it's our money, and that's why I think the legislature did make it a 5/7 vote. So you don't have plans, you're not out to bid on a million and a half dollar retrofit to the bowling stadium for the esports right now?
No, all we're here for today is the fence project.
Okay, won't see that anytime soon. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Breckus. Anyone else have any comments on this issue, on this item?
Madam Vice Mayor, I'll just, for the benefit of the group, we do have a surcharge subcommittee meeting scheduled for December, I can't remember, it's the 19th, or, yeah, it's the 19th, so we'll certainly be thinking about that, and Councilmember Breckus, to your credit, you have long advocated for this fund to be used to do some improvement projects in downtown, and I think the surcharge subcommittee has also been in favor of that as well, and so it is a work in progress.
Yeah, and maybe once you complete your work, it'd be good to bring it back to the table and have a fuller discussion here. So with all that said, I'm looking for a motion for.
I have a question.
Oh, you do, I'm sorry. Councilmember Ebert?
So when I was reviewing the staff report, when I looked at the artistic fence contract on page 3 of 14, I was just curious as to what the additional $5,000 is for, it says $54,032, and then the final amount is $5,032, or $59,032?
So that contingency is something we typically add to our construction projects in case we run into something that's unforeseen. You know, there's extremely tough construction conditions once they start digging in the ground, something that wasn't observed or included in our bid documents that the contractor or us were unaware of, we typically include that contingency amount in there just to cover us in case we need to make accommodations, to modify something from the plans based off of the field conditions. Something we don't anticipate having to use, but in case we need to, you know, modify the way we construct the fence and one way or another from what was in the bid documents, it's nice to have that contingency there and not have to come back asking for an increased amount, you know, during construction.
Okay, is, just going forward, is it possible to have that included as a line item? Because it just, you know, there's, it doesn't say that in here at all, it just says total base bid, and then, you know, it just has a different amount at the end there.
Yeah, if you were to reference, page 3 of the contract, there is a line item for base bid, and then we have contingency, and then typically when we bid the projects, we're not awarding a force account until we see the bids and can evaluate them and add them before we bring them to council.
All right, and then there was, you know, just, it was just a little confusing because also in the packet, it's, there's, on page 3 of the staff report, it says, you know, the bid amount was $59,032, which is below the engineer's estimate of $55,000. So it's just confusing, I mean, there's, appears to be discrepancies in the staff report, so I just want to kind of call that out, if we could, you know, explain these things a little better, a little more clear in these staff reports.
We'll address that better in future staff reports. Thanks for bringing that to our attention.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Ebert. Are there any more comments or questions on this item? All right, seeing none, could I get a motion?
I will make the motion, oh, I move to award the contract to Artistic Fence Company for the National Bowling Stadium Fence Project in amount not to exceed the $59,032 and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Breckus, a second from Councilmember Reese. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. We are on to Item B12.
Could we get a staff presentation on this one as well?
Yep.
Mike, Mike Michel, engineering manager, for the record, I do not have a formal presentation, but I would consider this item kind of a cleanup item. This portion of Coleman was offered to us back in 1996, it's been built to our standard, it probably should have been accepted by us decades ago, and I'm just here to clean it up today.
Well, let's bring up the maps at least, because, you know, as most people know, I have a long history with this organization. I worked in the Community Development Department from 1998 to 2009, I think, you know, in the period when this came forward. It is highly unusual for us to have a street that hasn't been accepted, and I think there was a little bit of history to this. Did you look into the history, or how, how'd you, did you just go in the files and figure out, or how'd this come to your attention?
It came to my attention by NV Energy.
NV Energy?
Yeah.
And can we bring the aerial, the satellite views up? And what did NV Energy say?
Well, they asked that we formally accept this portion of Coleman.
Okay, so, could you bring up the, I know you're working on it, yeah, yeah, so this section, well, let's, while he's doing that, did you hold any neighborhood meetings or inform any residents in the area of this?
No.
Did you go to the Neighborhood Advisory Board?
No.
Okay, and what, how did we get this property in the first place? Was it associated with the development?
There was a parcel map that was done in 1996, and this particular portion was offered to us back then.
Yeah, was it in association with the Highland Ditch, or the Highland Reservoir, I think it's called?
NV Energy did, was the applicant for the parcel map. I don't have any other history.
Yeah, I recall there was a series of special use permits associated with the Highland Reservoir, and I think there might have been some history. The issue that I'm bringing up, and I think it should be advertised to neighbors, it should go to the Neighborhood Advisory Board, I don't represent this area, but I think that engagement is very important, and I'm looking for the satellite view, is that I think the acceptance of this street would allow the subdivision or a parcel map of some large lot development that is located on the, it's hard to see from these very cluttered parcel maps, at the extension of Putnam Drive. The city has likewise not accepted Putnam Drive in that time, and I don't, I can't recall the circumstances, but let me ask you this, has anyone reached out to the Development Services Division about subdividing some of those larger lots that remain at this point?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, okay, let me, let me just, you guys able to bring that map up? Okay.
These are the only ones included in the staff report that we're seeing.
Oh, okay, well, that's unfortunate, I must have looked at it on my own, but can you highlight where the, where the section of acceptance is? Right here, okay, and then you've got an easement, is it, is it currently open, that road?
Yes.
And is there a gate across any spot over by Putnam, or where it goes off, the roads through Putnam Drive and Citadel?
Not to my knowledge.
Those aren't open?
They, there are no gates there.
There are no gates, okay, but those large lots, and I'm talking about parcel 002/52 and 002-10, 002-06, 002-05, those are very large lots that are underdeveloped and could be developed with large subdivisions, and this Coleman gives access to those subdivisions. And so I think that the acceptance of those roads needs to come with that understanding. It's not an unreasonable thing to know that there might be a subdivision, but the piecemeal development of us accepting this road and then a subdivision- But the piecemeal development of us accepting this road and then a subdivision map coming in in the future, I think is piecemeal and wrong. So at minimum, without any advertisement to the, to the neighbors, without this being on the Neighborhood Advisory Board, I'm having a hard time doing this as cleanup. And I think, you know, at minimum, maybe council should ask for a little more history on why the city did not accept the roads in the first place. Because I think it was a rather controversial neighborhood issue at the time. And it may be that the people didn't even want it who owned those properties at that time. Because they, they had their other access through private easements. And maybe they're ready to subdivide now. I just don't know. I think there's more history on this. I think, I, I'm fine kicking this off to have staff do more research to give us a history. But, and maybe bring this to the ward or notify, but I'm just not ready to do an acceptance. It's highly unusual. We do acceptances all the time. But they're in association with very new subdivisions, and this one is not that. So those are my concerns.
All right, thanks so much. And let me ask, does anyone else have any comments or question on this item? All right, Councilmember Brekis, do you want to make a motion?
Let's, let's move to defer this item to January, asking staff to put it on a Neighborhood Advisory Board meeting for Ward Five and do the research in association with NV Energy, I think it was called Sierra Pacific Power Company at the time, permitting of the Highland Reservoir, and to see if there's any city council past history associated with accepting or not accepting this road.
Okay, is there a second?
One second.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Are there any comments on the motion?
I'll speak to the motion. I'm not going to be supportive. I think politicizing street and acceptances of those streets, especially in an existing neighborhood, is unnecessary. I don't know what the reason why since the 1950s it hasn't, but I do know that area of town well. I grew up there. And so it's just, I think, a routine thing, as Mr. Michele has pointed out, and certainly I think all residents desire to know that the roads that they traverse are owned by an entity which then cares for and maintains them. And so those folks are deserving of those roads and road maintenance equally. So I don't think it presents an opportunity for any development that wouldn't otherwise occur. I think those are just disconnected realities. And so I am not supporting the motion.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Ms. Vice Mayor. As the representative of this ward, I will not be supporting this motion either. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Ebert, anyone? All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Brekis, second by Councilmember Ebert. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Okay. And I'm opposed as well. Motion fails. Is there a second motion? Would anybody like to make a second motion?
Thank you, Ms. Vice Mayor. Staff, I recommend adoption of the attached resolution.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Taylor, second by Councilmember Reese. Any comments on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
I do, just one quick comment. I just, my, my vote in support of Jenny's motion, it's not to say that I, I wouldn't support accepting these roads, but I don't see any harm in pushing this back, you know, one month and getting more community feedback at a NAB. I don't feel like that's a politicized move. I think anytime we get community engagement is important for the citizens. And again, moving things back one month, I don't think would be a huge detriment to any party in this, in this situation, so.
Well, well said, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion passes, four two. And I do want to comment this. I also, my very first home was off Coleman on Arcane. I'm pretty familiar with the area. I do concur with Councilmember Ebert that when we have issues like this, it's very good to get some NAB involvement. And I've been impressed with Ms. Kosky in the past, her team, about reaching out. I don't know that you knew at the time that this was maybe, that there were an issue there. But I wouldn't mind this, you know, possibly being considered for an item. Ms. Taylor on the Ward Five NAB going forward, you know, these kind of things. But it's also incumbent on us to let our staff know if we know about issues, so they can get these things agendized. So I appreciate the dialogue here today. We're going to move on to item B16. And that is about a language access plan for the city pursuant to Assembly Bill 266. Okay. And this was, I think, pulled by Councilmember Ebert. Did you want a staff presentation? Yes. Okay. Nick?
I do not have a staff presentation. Sorry, I was waiting for the public comment because I always end up speaking beforehand. Okay, great. Nick Sacconi, Government Affairs Manager for the record. Sorry, I haven't been on consent before. This item is a blanket, gives the authority to the city manager just to designate who will be handling the language access plan. You will be excited to know that the language access plan will be coming back before the body to actually vote on and receive public comment about that actual plan. But this just gives the authority to the city manager to designate that individual. Also, just for your information, some of, this plan was actually contemplated in the budget for this fiscal year.
Do you want to ask some questions?
Yeah, yeah, I did. So that was one of the questions I had because when I went through the staff report, most of the language in here from the bill is kind of county centric. I mean, towards the end, it gets more into city language. But I was just going to kind of ask some questions about it because I know we had said we would designate city employees, but there's a lot of language in here that says that we should be using licensed, hold on, let me try and find it now, licensed interpreters. So are the city staffers that we're going to be using, do they, are we going to require that criteria for them?
So the plan is comprehensive and will include many things related to some of the things that you've just highlighted, like folks with limited English proficiency. That will be actually contemplated in the plan, but not necessarily specific to this item. I hope that answers your question.
Well, I mean, hold on, let me find where it is. In here, I have a lot of notes, just one second. Yeah, it says, make good effort to find certified translators. So that's just one place. I had it underlined in here several, several places. Adequate credentialing and oversight of translators and interpreters. So, you know, just want to know, like, what, what does that mean? Do we know what that means? And, and, you know, just making sure that we're abiding by these stipulations when we're designating city employees.
I definitely understand what you're saying. I think the important part is to understand that the actual full plan will come back before the body. And that contemplation will be something subject to the body after the public comment period and after the Community and Equity Relations Department actually goes through the process of developing that plan, which will likely be who the city manager ends up designating, as it was included in the budget.
Okay.
Mrs. Farza?
Yes, thank you so much, Cynthia. As far as the Chief Equity and Community Relations Officer, to provide a little bit more context to the, the question, the plan will be coming back. We will certainly seek input from council as well as the community. But I also would like to highlight that we are, you know, want to ensure that we follow protocols and have individuals that are certified to translate and interpret, which is something we currently already have in place with the city of Reno, which is fantastic.
Great, thank you. That was my question. Councilmember Brekis?
Yeah, I want to thank my colleague for pulling this. You know, I want to ask about the outline of the plan. Like today, when these, the young women, the public speakers, asked to speak in Span- you know, said they were going to speak in Spanish. They're right. You know, would the plan cover something like our protocols of having translators there and then allowing them double, double time? Is that the sort of thing that would be captured? Because I, I felt a gap today with that. And, you know, they shouldn't be penalized with time or anything, or they shouldn't be penalized with non-Spanish speakers not understanding their message. They're here to deliver to us. So is that the sort of thing that the plan will cover?
That would all be contemplated in the plan.
Okay, so that's the substance, those are the sort of issues.
The focus is on limited English proficiency. That's, public comment is a method of having meaningful engagement with government, so that will be incorporated in the resolution.
Oh, okay. That'll be good. I think that's a good thing, and I look forward to that. Thanks.
Yeah, I wanted to say what, first of all, I want to thank Councilmember Brekis because I was thinking the very same thing today. I had hoped that they could at least, some of them did, but not all of them, say the topic that they were addressing, because I am limited in my Spanish proficiency. And I would have liked to better understand their message. So I'm glad that that'll be addressed. My question for the item is, did it require in the bill that the council designate the point person? Is that why we're having to designate the manager?
Nick Sacconi, Government Affairs Manager for the record, yes. Unlike many of the other bills we saw last session, this one just designated the city council rather than the city manager.
Okay, got it. Okay. All right. Any, yes, Mr. Martinez?
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. I just had a quick question about collaboration with the county. As was pointed out, there's a lot of language in the bill that talks about the counties and their designation, just making sure that we're collaborating with those folks over there and making sure we're doing things in tandem with them.
We, we are. We actually recently had a meeting with their project manager as well.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thanks for your work on this, Cynthia and Nick. Appreciate it.
I have another comment, if that's all right. Are we done?
Okay. All right, Ms. Ebert, you pulled this item. Do you want to make a motion?
I just have one more question.
Okay.
There was another portion in here that, you know, like you said, there's a lot more wording in here that discusses the role of the county versus the city's requirements. And there's a lot in here that says that the, this, the county needs to provide funding. Is there any funding that the county needs to pass along to the city, or is the city solely responsible for their own funding?
So those two sections of the bill are completely separate, so I don't believe any funding would be coming from the county to the city.
All right, thank you.
Okay. So with that said, are you interested in making a motion?
Oh, wait, I did have another question. So on the very last page of the staff report, there's funds listed on here. It says for fiscal year 2324, there's 104,000 and some change. And for fiscal year 2425, there's 84,000. Where is this money from and who's eligible for it? Is this like a state thing or?
I might be confused because I did not include any dollar amounts in my staff report.
Okay, so it's on the very last page here. I don't know if you want to come take a look at it?
Okay, now I understand your question. This was funding from the state for the Office of New Americans, which will be helping all of the cities and counties coordinate and figure out these language access plans.
Okay, so it's not, you know-
Not from the city or the county, correct.
All right, so it's not going to anybody, it's for their own setup?
Yes, but they will be helping and be great partners, working with them in order to create those language access plans.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, Ms. Ebert, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, all right. A motion from Councilmember Ebert, second from Councilmember Reese. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. Let me ask, do we have any kind of legal briefing today? I don't think so. All right, well, what I'd like to do is break at this time for lunch for 45 minutes and reconvene and take up item C1 when we get back.
Do you want to do item B23?
I apologize. We'll do B23 and then we'll do that.
Thank you.
All right, item B23, I think this was pulled by Councilmember Brekis.
Well, it's Ms. Ebert, so I'll let her-
Oh, all right, well, you pulled it.
She said she wanted-
Did you want to speak to it? It's B23.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't pull it, but let me see here.
It's your contribution to Jewish Nevada.
I am making a donation to Jewish, Jewish Nevada. I just wanted to say that I support the Jewish community and I'm making a donation again to Jewish Nevada.
Okay, well, you didn't pull it, so Ms. Brekis, you pulled it.
Yeah, I, I, I support Ms. Ebert in this resolution, and it's not dissimilar to the one above that Mr. Martinez did to an organization. And the one below that Mr. Reese and Ms. Ebert did to another organization that promote ethnic organizations, identity organizations working in our state. So I commend all because I think that's really consistent with our values and inclusive Reno. The issue on this one is, it reads, "To ensure the vibrancy of continuity of Jewish life in Nevada, Israel and around the world." And the other ones are really focused domestically. You know, Indian country, which is obviously the sovereign nations of our states. And then the other one is Indian culture in northern Nevada. This one, though, says, this is an organization that has a focus outside, an international focus in Israel and around the world. And I was just wondering if we could strike those two terms. So continuity of Jewish life in Nevada and keep the money local, not move it out of, with a focus to other countries, Israel and around the world. So I was just wondering if we could just make those amendments to the resolution. And then I can be in support.
That's up to you, Ms. Ebert.
I, I, I don't know. I mean, we can, but I don't know, you know, if that's what the organization does with the funds. You know, if this is their mission statement. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with saying that, but if we're donating to the organization.
Yeah. Well, how do they use the money in Israel? Do we know?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, it says that they, you know, ensure the vibrancy of continuity of Jewish life.
In Nevada, Israel.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I, I prefer, and it's consistent with other actions, to just keep it, this kind of money focused, you know, in Nevada. We, years ago, had a issue where we sent some people to go train in Ukraine and it became an issue. And I, I prefer to just, you know, strike those words and, and have the focus of this money to this organization be in Nevada.
Okay.
Yeah. So I, Mr. Reese, you wanted to comment as well?
Well, I wanted to support Ms. Ebert's original motion. I think it is, it is accurate that the, that Jews in the diaspora are located all across the world. And there is a, I think, a current trend towards violence towards people in this country and all across the world that it should not be discounted. What the organization uses the funds for is for Jewish life in Nevada, but those folks feel kinship across boundaries in a way that perhaps we do not as, as non-Jewish folk. And so I, I don't pretend to represent the Jewish community, but my point is, is that perhaps these are students here who would attend and go to Israel for a birthright, or they would go in celebration, or whatever they're doing with it, it is worthwhile to support their cause. And I just don't think that an organization needs to be micromanaged in the way that suggested. I don't think it has anything to do with when we sent or did not send police officers to Ukraine. Just disconnected thoughts, but I, I think what you've done, Ms. Ebert, is, is to be supported and lauded and have no objection or concern with how it's identified.
Anyone else like to speak to this? And Ms. Ebert, what's your feeling about this item? Do you want to? Maybe I should say something first before I ask you that.
Yeah, go ahead.
I want to support your original motion. And the reason is, is really what Mr. Reese said is that while all that our staff have done has restated the mission of the organization, many organizations, let's even take the Humane Society, have a very broad reach. But they're generally, the dollars are so small, they're going to use them locally. So I am not concerned that this money is leaving our town, never mind our state. So, you know, I'm comfortable with how you have it, but I'd like to hear from you.
Yeah, I, I'm comfortable with leaving it as is.
Okay. All right, well, with that said, any more comments? All right, I'm looking for your motion. A motion potentially.
Motion to approve.
All right, so Ms. Brekis, we have a motion and a second. Do you have comments on the motion?
Yeah, my comment is, I've only twice voted against contributions in 11 years. The other one was to a Pregnancy Counseling Center. And unfortunately, I'm not going to support this one. It's very consistent for us to target within an organization where the money goes. For example, the Community Cats money that, you know, was for Linden Street and, and Virginia Lake initiatives. And this one, because it says Israel and around the world and in, in, you know, in the theoretical that Mr. the theoretical that Mr. Reese brought, you know, tourism to Israel, I cannot support Reno money going to Israel-related activities. Having said that, I condemn Hamas and the actions of October 7th that resulted in the death, the brutal death of innocent citizens and hope the hostages who are still there will be released soon. I condemn anti-Semitic views, speech and action, but I cannot support Reno money going to advance Israel that I believe is engaging in a response disproportionate to what happened on October 7th and resulting in the mass casualties of innocent people, women and children in Gaza. So I don't support Reno money going to advance.
Okay.
Israel.
All right, thank you. Are there any more comments on the motion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right, motion passes. And at this time, we will take a break. We will return at 10 of 1. Okay, 10 of 1, not later than 10 of 1. I'm going for a 45-minute lunch break. Thank you. We are adjourned. All right, you ready? Okay. We're going to call our meeting back to order and welcome you back, those of you who are with us. We're on item C1, which is an ordinance introduction. And I'll hand it to you, Nikki, on our council.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. So just for the record, we're reconvening at 12:55 with Mayor Sheevy absent at this time. So we're on item C1, which is an ordinance introduction. The bill can be read by City Attorney Carl Hall and the presentation will be by Leah Picati.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ordinance introduction, Bill Number 7253, LDC 24-00007, Notable Music Therapy Services, specific plan district. Request has been made for a zoning map amendment from the Public Facilities PF zoning district to a specific plan district, SPD. Plus or minus three acre site is located on the south side of Orvato Street, approximately 285 feet east of its intersection with Silverado Boulevard, 2590 Oravata Street. The subject site has a master plan land use designation of public, quasi-public, PQP, Word 3.
All right, is there a, excuse me, presentation today? Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice Mayor Dorr. Leah Picati, Associate Planner with the City of Reno Development Services. And this afternoon, I'm going to present the application for the specific plan district for Notables Music Therapy Services.
Sorry, Ms. Picati, if you don't mind, we actually have to open the public hearing, Vice Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
So if we can do that before we go into presentation.
All right, so let, let the record reflect that the city council is opening the public hearing. Madam Clerk, was proper notice given and any correspondence received?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Proper notice was given and no correspondence on this item was received.
Okay. Do any council members need to make any disclosures on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll then go to the staff presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor Dorr. Again, Leah Picati, Associate Planner with Development Services, City of Reno. This afternoon, I am presenting for you this request from Notable Music Therapy Services to create a specific plan district on a three-acre parcel in east Reno. The subject site is a three-acre site. It is located on the south side of Oravato Street, just east of the intersection with Silverado Boulevard. This site was originally developed in 1973. In 2005, High Desert Montessori acquired the property and changed the zoning to public facilities with a master plan land use designation of public, quasi-public. High Desert Montessori eventually outgrew this location and built another location down the street. And then Notable Music Therapy Services acquired the property in early 2022. So the reason we're here today is because Notables wants to be able to utilize the existing commercial kitchen in this facility and rent it out for potential food-related uses. Right now, under the public facilities zoning, there are no food-related uses allowed. So this could be where it's a commissary for a food truck or it's a commercial kitchen or maybe they rent it out to somebody who bakes cookies and sells them at one of the craft fairs, something along those lines. But as it is right now, in the public facilities district, that's not allowed. So all they're asking to do here is retain that underlying public facilities zoning and add to allowed uses. Here you can see the master plan land use designation of public, quasi-public. You can see those conforming base districts are really limited in this particular land use designation. So without changing this to an SPD, the only other option would be to do a master plan land use amendment, which, as we all know, is a major process. So in this case, because the uses were really just PF uses with the allowed commercial kitchen and the wholesale bakery, it made sense to just create a specific plan district. So again, I just want to reiterate that the development standards are not changing. Everything that's allowed in PF and has been allowed in PF for the last 20 years is retained. The only things we're doing is adding commercial kitchen and food processing or wholesale bakery. We did add in there also that retail is not allowed. There are some residential uses surrounding this, so we just want to make sure that we don't end up with anything too large. So this item was heard by the Planning Commission in October and they did unanimously recommend to the city council to approve this item. The recommended findings are on the board for your review and here is the recommended motion. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
All right. All right, that was very quick and to the point. This is in Ward 3, so let me ask our Ward 3 member, do you have any comments, questions or advice for us?
Thanks so much, Vice Mayor. Yeah, I had a chance to tour the facility and got to see some of the upgrades that are happening and a great facility that they have to use there, just not the ability to actually put into practice. And so a lot of the, the asks that they're inquiring about for the SPD are already in place. So the commercial kitchen, all the equipment is already there. So they're just basically asking for us to allow them to be able to use those and to collaborate with other nonprofits, maybe food trucks or vendors, street food vendors possibly, who may be able to use this space to engage in preparing their food and what they're going to be able to sell in, in their facility. So I think it's, it's great that the Notables are looking for ways to expand their footprint and what they're able to do there. So I'm happy to support and provide a motion, but I obviously don't want to jump in case anybody has any questions or any other comments to make.
Very good. Does anyone have any comments or questions on this proposal? I'm going to make just one. I think it, I want to compliment our staff because you could have brought back a different, a master plan zoning change, which would have broadened the categories and would have potentially caused a lot of neighborhood disturbance if they thought retail was coming in or they thought commercial was coming in, because those would have allowed the kitchen. But by doing the SPD, I think you've, you've made like the smallest change possible and still allow them to do what they want and give the neighbors information and knowledge about what's coming. And also know that if they want to do something else, that this SPD specifically is about kitchen and cooking. So let's say they did want to come in and do retail or do a different kind of commercial or have a restaurant or whatever, they would have to come back and change, amend the SPD or get a different zoning category. So I just, I'm very, I'm very pleased when I see this kind of nuanced approach to, to meeting our community's desires and still not just opening up the door to everything. That's really important to me. So I was really glad to see it done this way. Anyone else have any other comments? I don't see any. So Councilmember Martinez, do you want to give us a motion?
I would love to. Thank you so much. I move to uphold the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Oh, let me ask this. I, I, sorry, I'm sorry. It looks like I needed to call for public comment, which I didn't. And do we have any?
We do not have any public comment. Thank you.
Okay, so sorry to interrupt the flow. Please continue.
Yeah, of course. I move to uphold the recommendation of the Planning Commission and refer Bill Number LDC 24-0007 for a second reading and adoption.
All right, so we have a motion from Councilmember Martinez, second from Councilmember Reese. Is there any comment on the motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. Good job. I'm going to make an inquiry. I know the mayor's due any moment, but is she present or I don't? Okay, what's that? She is present?
She's in the paper.
Okay, well, what I'm thinking about doing is skipping to item, I think it is, let me just check, skipping to item D2. I, I think it would be good to have the mayor here to discuss the housing initiative. She's been such an advocate. So would that be fine with folks is to skip D1? Let me just make sure I've got this right, yes. And to go to item D2.
D2?
Yeah, D as in David, too.
What about D1?
I was going to skip D1 for a minute and come back to it when the mayor joins us.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
So I do have a presentation here for this. Good afternoon, everyone. For the record, Emily Kidd, Internal Auditor, City of Reno. So today, we're here to summarize the follow-up reporting for the code enforcement audit of metrics and reporting. Professional audit standards require a follow-up to monitor and ensure that management actions have been effectively, effectively implemented or that senior management has accepted the risk of not taking action. The purpose of this audit was to provide an analysis of the internal control environment for code enforcement reporting. It was both independent and objectively completed. The audit findings generally found a business environment that could benefit from some enhancements to their procedures. to their procedures, reporting, and oversight. The audit recommendations generally included process changes and IT updates for greater internal controls and reporting capabilities. We recognize that these corrective actions were a priority of the council, and I'm happy to report that all 14 of the audit recommendations have been implemented with the assistance of multiple departments throughout this year, including direct oversight from the city manager's office. All of this very much sped up the implementation of even the more complicated corrective action plans included in the original audit report. So thank you for the effort by the team. As a reminder, the internal audit function here at the city is to, here to provide the City of Reno with an independent appraisal function designed to assist the Reno City Council, constituents, and city management in establishing accountability, transparency, and a culture of continuous improvements here in city operations. To provide you with additional details regarding the program enhancements at code enforcement, the departmental director, Mr. Woodley, is here as well.
Awesome, thank you, Emily. For the record, Alex Woodley, Director of Parking and Code Enforcement Department. So before I start, I just wanted to state for the record that as much as I'd like to stand here and brag about what we've done to come into compliance with all the findings in the audit, I have to admit and acknowledge the assistance of all the other departments. We had multiple departments that helped us to be successful today, primarily starting with the city manager's office. And I know she doesn't expect this, but I do want to take just a minute of your time to express my gratitude and the gratitude from my code officers to Ashley Turney. When you work in the job in the field that we do, when you're in the field and you're dealing with public nuisances, over, overflown sewage, people yelling at you, cursing at you, lying to you every day, you can become cynical. And one of the biggest concerns when you work in that type of environment is when someone shows up, does a two-hour ride-along, and walks away saying, "I know everything that they do." So I really appreciate it, and so do my officers, the time, the dedication that Ashley took. She was, she took a lot of time with individual officers, with our-
It's the master mic. Resident turn off. Okay, thank you.
Are we good? Okay, outstanding. And she got into the weeds. She really did. She, she, and she told the officers in the front at the very beginning, she said, "You know what? I am here to learn, help, assess, and make things better. I'm not here to tell you how to do your job. You're the subject matter experts." And she sat with them. She sat with them. She grinded with them. She saw every click of the computer, every phone call. She even went out in the field. I have one story, they were out in Verde, I heard one of my officers on a ride-along in, in the boonies, a street, dirt street, and he was making contact with this encampment with a lot of individuals, and she swore, "I'm going to be your backup." And he said, "No, stay in the vehicle." Now, mind you, this is Neil. He's our 6'5", 250-pound code officer, so he was good to go. But he said she was down to roll and go out and make contact with me, and she gained a lot of respect. Yes, ma'am.
Was that in high heels? Or?
No, ma'am, she wore sneakers. She did wear field clothes. She was. She was dressed for the field. Yes, ma'am.
All right.
So, so I just want to express that. We really appreciate it. Thank you, Ashley, wherever you are. Oh, there she is. So what we did primarily was some philosophy changes. 25 years ago, when I first started in code enforcement, a citizen would call a complaint, and they would never follow up. They would not even want to be known that they called it in. Well, times have changed. This day and age, citizens are very involved. When they call, they want information. They want follow-up information. They want status. So one of the things we've done is we've changed how we do our comments, how we close our cases, ensure that there's information, enough information there, so that when there's a follow-up call, the city has the ability to provide that complaint with the information necessary. We also made some changes to reduce duplication and efforts. I'll go more into that later on, as you'll see with the collaborations with other departments. And then we also, of course, had some process changes to provide consistency and equitability for all cases, which I'll go into that as well in the next slides. And what you'll see here, what I want you to focus on is the visual aid, not so much the words inside each box, but the fact that there's six boxes here. It used to be a six-step process, and we've reduced it to five. This is going back to what was identified in the audit as far as making it more efficient and, and, and effective. The courtesy letter, the 14-day letter, was not really necessary. It was an extra step we were doing, but it was prolonging our cases and the outcome of the resolution. Some of the things that we changed had to do with making our code enforcement manual digitally available. We had some automation in the workflow. Thanks to IT, they really assisted us a lot with that. And then we also made some changes to leverage expertise, whether it's within the department or other departments. Just to give you a simple example, it would be something like phone calls. We wanted to make sure that officers that are out in the field all day, that if a resident, a citizen called, they wouldn't have to wait till the end of the day when the code officer arrives back. So we have our administrative staff receiving those phone calls, feeling them, and then those that were simple, or that are simple calls, they can provide them a response, and then anything that needs to be deferred to the officer, they would take care of it once they got back in the field, into the office from the field. We also, one thing that we, one of the biggest changes that we made that was significant was with regards to waiving citations or not, and extensions, how long we gave. So we wanted to make a bold statement to ensure that there was no misunderstanding. So first and foremost, we created the policy that does not allow code enforcement officers to waive any fines or fees. There's still an opportunity for those to be done through a third party using the existing hearing officers that we have. We also, any, anytime you're changing any policies and procedures, especially those that are guided by the NRS and the RMC, the Reno Municipal Code, and the Nevada revised statutes, and other ordinances that we use, we want to make sure that we do not conflict with what's in law, what's in ordinance. So that is one thing that we're looking into, is a review of those ordinances, whether it's the International Property Maintenance Code or Reno Municipal Code. We also identified now we are doing proactive cases, 10% of all cases. This is to ensure and address those situations where if a code officer went out in the field and addressed one, one property, that they still now had the ability, the flexibility to address any other properties without a complaint. So that way, you wouldn't have just one property being addressed, and then there's one down the street that wasn't addressed. So we, we, we address that, for lack of a better term. Okay, as far as collaborations, the building without a permit was, was one of the efficacy's that we created, thanks to the help of Chris and his staff. Danielle, I believe she's our new Assistant Director for Development Services. She helped to create a compliance program. So now, when a building without a permit complaint comes in, it goes directly to the Building Department. They address it, they assess it, they use their professional experience, subject matter expertise, make the first contact, and when necessary, if necessary, they transfer the case to us, and then we can proceed with our administrative citations and whatever other remedies that we have available to us. Business licensing inspections, that's, we work with business licenses to now start being a part of the licensing process, especially for privileged licenses. So we want to get officers out there, get eyes on it, so before you see it, especially if you have any concerns or questions as it relates to whether it's special use permits or the privilege license itself, you have code officers putting eyes on those licenses before you see them. So we'll be able to provide approvals and also answer any questions as necessary. We also input the collaboration of finance, another department that was very helpful. We created our own directive in-house to make sure that we comply with Policy 304 as it relates to cash handling, whether it's cash, whether it's checks, whether it's credit cards, whatever avenue people wish to use. We have specific step-by-step to make sure that all employees are aware how we process that and then deliver it to the, the Finance Department, or the city clerk's office, whichever avenue. We've enhanced our website to make sure that we have information available, fillable documents, FAQs, which we didn't have before, a lot of our videos, thanks to comms. We have a lot of, we have several Reno Minutes that provide information to our citizens. And once again, IT, as it relates to cell automation, now we have the ability, an officer sends a citation, and invoice goes out immediately with it. So that's great. That makes it quick. And then, of course, we have our standard reports for management to review the workload and the caseload and what's occurring through, in, in the department. And that's pretty much it.
All right. Great report. That, we, we just learned a lot, and a lot has changed, it seems.
Yes, ma'am.
I do have some comments, but let me ask if anyone else would like to, yes, Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Just, what a tremendous effort. This is a great example of how I think we should work. There was a challenge. We saw some issues. They were identified. They were brought to us. Our leadership team pulled together all of the resources. I heard a couple of, I heard finance, IT, development, comms, the audit team, code enforcement, you all came together to make things better and get a better product. So thank you very much. There was a lot of work that went into this, I, I know, because last year, there were some concerns, so thank you very much, can't say enough. And I would just, again, our new Assistant City Manager, thank you so very much for all of your effort in this. I know you're hiding back there, but it was truly a team effort, and I think it's a testament to the leadership that's in this organization. So I think it's, when we have opportunities to improve, this is the model, and this is the way that we want to do it. And now we have a shining star code enforcement department. Look at that smile, see? Look at that. So thank you very much, and thank you, Emily, for all of your help. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Well said, Councilmember Taylor. Really nice. Councilmember Breckus.
Yeah, I have some questions for Ms. Kidd. Thank you. So in your staff report, or your, the document that you put forward, I don't think it was the staff report, oops, my attachments aren't coming up. You referenced a couple times, you know, your spreadsheet?
Yes.
Yeah. Is that the staff report, or it's a?
No, that would be just the attachment.
Yeah, yeah. For some reason, my attachments aren't coming up on this. Oh, here they go. Yeah, so you call it the audit follow-up. You mentioned a couple times this policy 2302 that they prepared pursuant to it. And then you also mentioned Directive 010123.
Okay.
Yeah. And I couldn't find those, you know? And it's a suggestion of a viewer is maybe next time, you know, maybe we were sent these because this has been long-going, but maybe next time, attach them so we can read, read them ourselves, because so much related to, you know, this new policy they adopted. And I just wanted to know, have you spread those? Did you see these?
Absolutely. When management responses include a document or a memo of some kind, I request evidence of said document and to make sure that it addresses the, the thing that it was supposed to address, right? So just to make sure, similar to a management response that might not directly address the recommendation at hand, I'll work with a department until we get the best answer possible, similar to the documents.
Okay. Well, I, you know, just, my suggestion is then, these attached to your reports is, you know, since this one, every answer, response is this policy, this policy, this policy. And then I did read both policies. Well, and I just, I'm trying to figure out, where does this policy live? It's code enforcement policies and procedures, because on the internet, we have management policy and procedures, but this appears to be a, a division or a department one. Where does this live, then?
That would live in the division or the department.
Okay.
So that's an internal working document, similar to a standard operating procedure or a desk manual? Those aren't generally a forward-facing document.
Okay, okay, gotcha. And then this other one is a, it's called a directive. I've never heard of a directive. Where, where do those live?
I'm going to hand that over to Mr. Woodley.
Yes, ma'am. Alex Woodley, for the record. That lives also in the same area as, we have it all in electronic, and a directive typically, especially in law enforcement and code enforcement, you have policies, procedures, and directives. Directives typically will say specifically, this is how we're going to do things, as opposed to, and what I mean by that is, first, you're going to turn on the computer, then you're going to press this button, then you're, you know, so on and so forth. Whereas a policy says, this is what we're doing as a department, here's the reason why, et cetera.
Okay, and then this one has the employee sign it?
Yes, that's, that's something that I've implemented, that's to make sure that every employee understands what is required of them.
Okay. And they sign it like on hiring or something, or?
Whenever you have a new directive.
Oh, everyone has to go sign it?
Exactly. You have to read it and sign it, because, especially when it's something important that covers the department.
I was just wondering, I didn't really have a, a framework for departments to have these. I mean, I know the managers' policies and procedures, but I hadn't seen that there was a, a outline or table of contents for department ones, so, and where those live. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Breckus. Anyone else? Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. I also want to take the opportunity to commend Director Woodley, Emily Kidd, for conducting the audit and addressing all those concerns that came out. I know when the council first received some of those, they were very eye-opening and caused, you know, some stir in all of us, and so I'm glad to see how quickly you, under the leadership with our new Assistant City Manager, were able to, you know, correct some of those things and address those issues that came up. One thing that I brought up during my briefing, and I want to bring up today, too, is Section 12 of the code enforcement audit, when it talks about streamlining the enforcement process, there's a section that talks about the Reno Municipal Code and some updates that happened to that. I know we're looking at other sections of our Reno Municipal Code, and so I'm just wondering, from your perspective, do you think that's something else that we need to be looking into? It looks like that's, that is one of the recommendations that's on here, but I just wanted to get your perspective, Director Woodley, and then Ms. Kidd, if you have any questions or responses to that, I'd love to hear that as well.
Yes, for the record, Alex Woodley, Director of Code Enforcement. I can speak to that. As I stated previously, we want to make sure that the ordinances, that we are in compliance with the existing ordinance. So when we make changes in the policies and procedures, I'll give you an example. One of the things that we identified that we would like to streamline is a notice of violation. A notice of violation currently in the code, it states that we must provide an appeal process and information, where we discussed it with our attorneys, discussed it with Ashley, and we reviewed it. The notice of violation is really a notice. So there's nothing, there's no penalty, there's no citation. So do we really need it to be appealed? Because what would happen is, a person will get the notice, oh, I'm going to appeal it, and now here we are, three months later, because we're going to court.
Oh, that makes sense.
So one of the things we want to do is remove that language. Still keep it in there for citations or any other type of penalties, but remove that specific language from the ordinance so that it doesn't infringe in what we're trying to do here to make things more efficient and quick.
Okay. Thank you for that direct example, and I also want to give a shout-out to the IT Department. It looks like there's a lot of stuff in here that was able to be automated and added to the website to be able to make it more customer-friendly, I'll say, in those terms. And so, City Manager, if there's any way that we can look at opening up, you know, the Reno Municipal Code, to start looking at those updates, I'd be interested in pursuing that if that's the will of the body and that's what we want to do. So thank you so much.
And if I, if I may, Your Honor, I also wanted to follow up, sir, because you did ask a question during the briefing as it relates to paying online, and I wasn't able to give you a definitive answer, but I did review it with Ashley. We do today, right now, yes, if you have a fine or a citation from code enforcement, you do have the ability to go online and pay it.
Good.
Thanks for responding to that.
Anyone else? Councilmember Beburt? Anything for the good of the order? I have something, but let me ask Councilmember Reese, anything on this one? Well, what I would like to add is that, A, I'm really glad that people are going in the field. It made, a comment you made, made it sound like people are actually leaving their desk and going out to see, either for a license, or, could you explain that a little more?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, ma'am. And I'll, I'll even make it real-life experience, the situation we had on Booth with the convenience store. There was a special use permit that has some of those conditions, were not in compliance, while they were in the process of getting their business license reviewed. So code enforcement at that particular time went out there. So now what we're doing is, we're doing it before it comes to you. So before you even see it, if there's an SUP, planning the, the division is looking at the, the license, they're saying, hey, there's an SUP here, let's send this to code enforcement. Check these 24 conditions of approval before we approve this license, and it goes before the council.
I love that. I mean, that gives integrity to the whole planning process and permitting process, to know that we're going to hold you accountable to following these permits, and if you come in for a renewal, we're going to hold you accountable and make sure those things are being done.
Yes, ma'am.
The other thing I really liked to hear was about the cash handling and not being able to negotiate fines on the site. I do think it's good for the code enforcement officers to have some flexibility or some, I don't know what the right word is, but ability to make a judgment call on certain things, to make, just, just like a police officer can say, I'm going to give you a warning versus a citation. I'm a little unclear about the thing you just said, notice of violation versus a citation. Maybe you don't even need a notice of violation. I, I'm just saying.
So that, that's actually great, because a notice of violation, and we made it 30 days, because of the fact that we took into consideration that officers are not going to be waiving citations, we want to make sure that we extend the courtesy to property owners, you know, we're going to give you 30 days. You know, we're gonna give you 30 days. Now, even with that 30 days, we have within the policy, under certain conditions, certain situations-
Is it 30 days, I'm sorry, to fix it?
Correct.
Oh, I see.
Correct, correct. Unless it's an imminent hazard, there's, there's an exemption for that. If you have no heat, it's today. There is no 30 days. So, um, uh, the officers do have the ability, they still have the discretion, is what we like to call it.
Discretion, yeah.
Yes, ma'am, to provide an extension. The extension is a standard two-weeks extension. If it is necessary, I'll give you a perfect example. Um, the, the, the boiler has to be fixed. Well, the contractor ordered the parts, or the elevator, what have you, and it won't be here until a month. As long as we can get confirmation from that contractor, and we can confirm the circumstances that they have no control over, they can receive approval from management. Supervisory staff will approve beyond the 14 days. So, you do have that situation. With regards to finances or the citations, they still have the ability to be heard by the hearing officer-
Gotcha.
-who can make that determination.
Okay, the other thing I just wanted to mention is about, um, making sure that when we do do the penalties, that if they don't pay, that we do do the follow-up, and that if they still don't pay, that we do file the liens. And I think it's so important, because my understanding is, government liens get paid, when a building's being sold. Government liens, li- liens first are non-negotiable and have to be paid-
Right.
-before anything else is paid, even banks. And so, I really think this is to our interest to make sure that, that we are filing those appropriately.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Every month, we receive notice from the escrow companies. They know it right off the bat. Every escrow company has our contact information, because they all deal with us. So, every month, we do that.
Okay, that's very cool. All right, well, my time is up, and let me see, um, Madam Mayor, welcome back. And do you have comments on this item?
No, other than, um, always, you are one of my favorite departments, and I just think you're doing a great job, and really appreciate everything that, I mean, you've come so far, but, like, it's a tough, tough job. It's so tough. So, you, you always do it with grace, and I appreciate that. And also, thank you for the kind words, uh, for Ms. Turney.
She did good. She did amazing. She impressed my guys.
I'm impressed, because I know it's like to go on one of those ride-alongs, and, um, you know, you do have to throw your shoes out after you do it, right?
Yes, ma'am.
But, um, thank you so much for actually, actually, uh, she's still here, so it was successful. Thanks so much, Alex.
Thank you, ma'am.
And then, uh, let's ask our auditor, what are you looking for for us today? In terms of any kind of acceptance or motion?
Yeah, so traditionally, we've accepted the follow-up documents, and, uh, since this is, they're all closed, then we'll be done with this particular experience.
Okay. Well, I, I think you're proving your worth here, Emily, if you didn't long ago. I mean, by having you on the job and finding these things and holding people accountable, we're getting better.
I, I do want to say this audit felt different because there was so much support from the 15th floor. And oftentimes, I'll give a, you know, a departmental director an audit report and say, please implement these, I'll be back. But I, it doesn't always happen, right? The impetus wasn't always there, and this time it was. And it really did make a difference, and not, a lot of these 14 items were difficult. It had multiple steps, they weren't one-and-done, and to have it be completed and implemented is a whole new day in that reporting world.
Very, very cool. So, I'm looking, oh, you want some comments, Mr. Manager?
Madam Vice Mayor, um, I do want to say that, uh, we've done a pretty good job of recognizing people who contributed to this project today. Um, and I'm glad that you mentioned the auditor and sort of the functionality that she provides, and the avenues and opportunities she provides for our organization to get better. Um, I do think that this, this process highlighted that for a number of departments. But, um, one thing that I don't know that we've quite driven home enough is that the steadiness and the leadership of Mr. Woodley in that department is what made this work.
Hmm.
Um, you know, we've, we've sort of danced around it, uh, and, and said, we've talked about the trepidation that's felt by the folks who do the work, uh, when we have these audits, when we go out and say, hey, we're gonna fix this. And, and certainly, I think that historically, um, you know, the, the way Director Woodley described it as, I'm gonna show up, I'm gonna be here for an hour, and I'm gonna tell you your business about, you know, the entirety of what you do for, for our organization. Um, we spent way more time than that, and I think, you know, not without its struggles, but, uh, this has really provided a blueprint for us to leverage the audit function into, you know, taking everything from good to great, uh, across the constellation of services we provide here. So, I do want to personally extend my thanks to Director Woodley and Auditor Kidd, uh, for their leadership in this process.
Well, well done to you both. Um, you know, it really is an example of how we get better. And thank you, because all of us care about code enforcement. It's, it's basically the backbone to what we do. It, it shows that we mean what we say. So, very good. Um, so, I'm looking for a motion to accept this report.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Reese, and a second from Councilmember Martini, uh, did I say that, Martinez? Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion is unanimous, so good job to everyone. I'm gonna hand the meeting over, uh, to Madam Mayor. Um, we're gonna go back a step to Item D1, which is the housing initiatives.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, I'm gonna send it to you, Madam Clerk. Item D1, do you have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, we do have, we did receive written correspondence on this item, one letter of opposition and one letter of concern. Those have been distributed to the Reno City Council. Outside of that, we do not have any registered public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. Then I will send it right back to, um, Angela. Go ahead, take it away, Ms. Booth.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the council. For the record, Angela Booth, Assistant Director for Development Services. Just to maybe refresh your memory on where we've been in the last two months. On November 1st, we held a workshop on housing, and that was about a five-hour workshop, where we talked about a number of things. What, the first thing we talked about was the, the Shane Phillips Report, where he provided a list of things that we, as the City of Reno, could do to be more supportive of, of both housing and to address some affordable housing issues. As part of that discussion, we also had a presentation on our zoning code cleanup, specifically related to some of the housing initiatives that staff looked at and is proposing. Now, the direction from council at that meeting was, we need more information to understand, over the past couple years, what our zoning code has given us so far, to see if we need to be making changes. So, really, the, the purpose of today is a follow-up from that meeting on November 1st. I'm gonna go over the, the same topics that we talked about. There's about five different elements that we want to propose to, to make changes to, as part of our zoning code cleanup. And I'm gonna provide you some data, over the last three years, of things that our current zoning code has given us, in terms of housing, and how we can then improve upon that. So, again, I'm not looking for you to adopt anything today. I am just looking for your feedback to say, yes, we support these initiatives. Go forth, go out and do some stakeholder outreach, go out and go back to the planning commission, then bring something back to us. Again, this is not a yes or no discussion. I'm giving you feedback, you tell me if we're on the right page, if this is the path you want to go down. If you do not want to go down this path, we will stop wasting staff resources and spending community time on this, and find something else to work on. I'm kidding. Okay, so, why the housing initiatives now? I, I will say that, you know, Reno is, is not alone in this. We are in a housing crisis. This is not unique to Reno, or Wausau County, or Nevada. This is a national crisis. Every jurisdiction across the country is dealing with these same challenges. And everyone is asking themselves, what can we do to bring housing to market faster? What can we do to help with the supply of housing? What can we do to make housing more affordable? So, these are the problems that everybody is addressing. We didn't come up with these alone, our solutions alone. We're coming up with these solutions based on, what are other jurisdictions doing? So, really, this is something that everybody is grappling with. And we want to see if, again, City of Reno, what do you guys want to do to help move that needle forward in terms of housing? Now, the other thing that's really pushing this forward is Assembly Bill 213. During this last legislative session, the, um, the legislature passed a new bill, and they said by July of 2024, so we basically have seven months, each of the local jurisdictions has to make some changes to their zoning code. Um, specifically, they want to prioritize processing of affordable housing projects. They also want us to look at deviations, or things that we can do to change our current process, to get, um, affordable housing approved administratively. One more thing they want to do is come up with options to provide incentives to do more affordable housing. So, we've tried to, again, take that Assembly Bill and incorporate it into what we would call some, some code cleanups that we're looking at today. Now, there's, there's really three things that seem to slow down housing. One is the time. The time it takes to get to market is a big deal. If it means you have to go through a six-month master plan amendment process, that's a long time. Anytime we have to add time, it means we have to add money. It's gonna cost more. Uh, one of the other things that we've heard over and over again is anytime there's uncertainty. When developers come to the table knowing what the rules are, it's easier for them to say, I'm comfortable spending money on this and moving forward. When there's uncertainty, meaning oftentimes, they have to go through a public hearing process, and who knows what the conditions will be added, whether it's a planning commission, or a city council, or the neighbors, that uncertainty adds time and money, and that makes it very difficult for these projects to move forward. So, we're gonna go through each of those incentives or packages that we talked about, and I'm gonna give you data. The first one we talked about was, how do we provide incentives to do more affordable housing? One of the things that we're proposing is, if you have an affordable housing project with that 60% AMI, so again, these are subsidized affordable housing projects. We generally get two to three projects a year. It's not like they're, they're coming at us like crazy. Literally, there's, there's only two to three projects per year that we generally get. So, we're saying, if we can exempt them from going through a public hearing process, and let them go straight to building permit, it saves time, and it saves money, and it saves on that uncertainty. This doesn't mean it's a, it's a catch-all, and you can do whatever you want. You still have to meet your building requirement standards. You still have to meet your height, whatever your zoning district says is. Um, you still have to meet your, your setbacks. So, you would not be exempt from an entitlement process if you're trying to deviate from things like a, a variance or a deviation. This is more of a conditional use permit. We exempt you, you can go straight to building permit. Again, at the building permit stage, we still check that you're meeting all your zoning requirements and all your building requirements. Um, the other thing that we're proposing to do is just add a staff liaison for these affordable housing projects. So, when you come in for a building permit, we have somebody on staff who will help to process this, to help it make it, make it, uh, go faster. In terms of data, specific to that topic. So, we looked over the last three years. Of the affordable housing projects that we have processed, how many have had to go through some kind of entitlement? We've had five in the last three years. Now, considering we get two to three affordable housing projects a year, this is a lot. You may think, oh, five projects had to go through an entitlement process, that doesn't seem like a big deal, but that's more than half of what we process in a year. So, by making this change, allowing those affordable housing projects to go straight to a building permit, those five projects could be at building permit much faster than if they had to go through this process. All right, the second topic.
On that one?
Sure.
Yeah, because you said you had five, and I'd like to take each one in, in order. And, you know, this is kind of a follow-up to workshops. So, you could go back to those five. And your example was, uh, you know, cutting time with if they have a master plan, need a master plan amendment.
They would still have to comply with zoning and master plan, so that does not exempt them.
So, I did my own independent analysis, um, because you didn't mention of these five, what each one needed. But, um, it looks like most needed zoning changes.
Some did, some did not.
Okay, so, you know, for me then, if only, you know, five in three years needed this provision, and, huh, you know, mo- most of those, of these five, are gonna need zoning or master plan anyway, y- you know, it's, it's low priority for me. It's probably an easy thing to ch- change in the zoning code. It's probably an easy Title 18 amendment to run, but it doesn't take a big grab of the problem, to me. In fact, one of Mr. Phillips's other recommendations, which is do some neighborhood planning, so you have good zoning and master plan land uses out there in the neighborhoods, where you've looked at, I think is, is the better way to tackle this project, because these developers who come through for the subsidies have to go out and acquire sites. So, it's not like we can get ahead of that. We don't know what sites they're gonna be acquiring. So, um, I'm not convinced that this is the highest priority, but, y- y- you know, so, where is it on level of ease of the five that you have? Is it?
I'm proposing all of these equally.
You propose each one equally, in the outcome that they have in improving the housing world?
No, I, I, my, my point was, we're trying to do what we can to get affordable housing and housing to market faster. To me, these are quick things that don't have a major impact on development, that will help get these projects to market faster. And, and again, what the legislature told us to do, as local jurisdictions, is find ways to get affordable housing projects to market faster. And that includes taking away, or I'd say, providing more administrative approvals. So, this is exactly in line with what the legislator has directed us to do.
And did they mean subsidized when they said affordable?
They have said affordable, and they, they, they identify affordable as a 60%, 80%, and 120% AMI.
Okay, so the certainty then is the subsidized projects. I get that. I'm just, I'm trying to understand, of the five, you know, areas you're recommending, um, you know, what is air ease for us to do? So, we can say we did something? And what is impact? So, so of the five, is this, where does this rank of ease? And where does it rank of impact?
This is very easy to do. Impactful, again, if it means that we can get subsidized housing to market faster, I would say that's very impactful.
Yeah, oh, okay, I, I get it. I'm just really looking at, you know, because you're gonna go on and show us four more. I just wanted to know if this one is more impactful than the other four?
So, just to clarify, I'm not ranking these at all. These are all equally important to staff.
You feel, okay, okay, well, you want to run through everything?
No, I think it's fine. I think while we're on it, just while it's fresh in your mind, let's go ahead and take each one.
Okay.
I have a question on this one.
Take each one. All right, perfect. I just want everyone to be aware, because I'm gonna watch the clock on you. Okay, go ahead. Yeah, thank you. Um, I have two questions on this. You started out by saying, this would be for 60% AMI.
Yes.
But often, I see developers come in, and they'll have one room of this, four rooms of that, 10 rooms of something else. So, is it 100% has 60% and lower, or just one room has to be 60%?
It would be an average, and we have included that in our proposed language. So, your overall project, if it averages 60% AMI, then you could go forward without that entitlement.
Okay, so that helps me. And the second thing, before I would, you're, you're not asking for voting today, so I'm asking you what question I'm gonna ask.
Yep.
The question I would ask is, you've given us five affordable housing projects. I would like to know how long they took, because I want to, I want a baseline. I want to know, it took this long, 20 months,
I want to know it took this long, 20 months and we did this thing and now it took 12 months. Or it took 20 months and now it took 19 months. Or it took 20 months and every other project took 20 months too, or even other projects were longer. I want to know where the time delay is coming. Is it in our processing? I, we only can control our processing.
It's true.
But I often hear that, you know, there's other committees. There's a, the home funds have to go through a whole other committee process and those committees only meet so, so often. I mean, by just speeding up the time that the committee meets to award home funds from, let's say, twice a year to four times a year. I mean, we could cut off three months right there.
So again, specifically related to the zoning code, what can we as, as a city with zoning power do? When a project is required to go through a conditional use permit, from the time they submit till the time it's at planning commission, it's about three months.
Okay.
But let's back into, they first have to submit a conditional use permit.
Right.
Which means they have to hire an architect and a geotechnical engineer and civil engineer. So that's about three months worth of them hiring and those designers designing the project to even get it to a conditional use.
To get a CUP.
So generally speaking.
A CUP.
Not every project triggers a conditional use permit, but for the ones that do, generally speaking, we would save them about six months worth of time.
Well, this is what I wanted to see. I want to see how long it takes actually. Like I want to have the knowledge of how long it actually does take in-house as compared to other permit projects. Does it take longer or the same? And why do I, why does this matter? Well, I, I had a dialogue with some people in South Reno recently, just in the last couple of days. And the, the conversation was not about housing and traffic. It was about something else. But everyone on the conversation relate, goes right back to, we have too many apartment complexes. We have too much traffic. The traffic hadn't been addressed. The roads haven't kept pace. They're holding me responsible for what RTC has or hasn't done. In this case, has delayed Steamboat Parkway from getting upgraded where many apartments are. And nearby, there are some affordable complexes. And so what I want to know, I, I am not eager to waive the requirement because each of, I'm just telling where I stand. Because each of these, if it's a zoning change, they still have to get the zoning change, right?
They do.
So I'm not sure what we're doing. I would like to know for your five examples, did they need a zoning change and how long it took?
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the next one is density bonus. We currently have in our zoning code, a density bonus for affordable housing. This means that if you're allowed to come in, let's say with 30 units, the zoning you have allows for 30 units. If you provide that affordability, that 60% AMI, the code today allows you to put in more units. You still have to meet your parking requirements and your landscape requirements and your setback and your height and all those requirements. It basically allows you to provide more units than your zoning would allow. So that's in code today. One of the, the things that we looked at is, is it, is it effective? Is it really moving the target, so to speak, on affordable housing or can we do more? And so what we're proposing is to do more. Right now, we cap that affordable housing density bonus at 60% AMI. So all these projects that come with zero to 60% AMI, we allow them to do that density bonus. We went back and we looked at state law. NRS does have three categories for affordability. One is that zero to 60%. Then there's that 61 to 80%, which we don't talk about at all in our zoning code. Then there's that 81 to 120% AMI. Again, we don't talk about that at all in our zoning code. So to be more consistent with state law, we said, what if we started providing density bonuses for those levels of affordability? So what we're proposing is to add that density bonus basically for anything over 60% up to 120%. So that's at workforce housing. High level, we don't get a ton of subsidized projects that meet that AMI. But if we're trying to provide incentives to encourage more affordable housing at that rate, this is something we can do. Let's go back and look at the data. So in the last three years, we've had one project that was affordable that used the density bonus and they got one additional unit. So this is not something that is used heavily. And the fact that we're not seeing a lot of projects, affordability projects using this tells me that maybe our incentives is not doing enough. Maybe we need to do more. And that's why we're proposing to do more. So again, we want to open it up to projects beyond that 60% AMI and go up to that 120%. Questions on this one?
Yeah, one? Thank you, thank you. And I'm, I'm following along the staff report here. So this is, this is the one that you've got the heading, proposed density bonus increases for affordable housing. And this, is this different from the bonus increases for market rate infill development?
It is because market rate does not have that AMI attached to it. Marker eight, we don't look at the price of, of.
Okay, okay. So, so, okay, so I see what you're doing. You're going to do that. But you know, the question I had, again, going up to your list of the five projects, how many of those go into zoning districts where we don't have a cap on density anyway? That's, Mr. Phillips brought it out. That was a, a good thing that, you know, those of us who've worked with Reno's code for many years know that Reno's code is very generous to multifamily, doesn't have density caps in your, you know, traditional base, multi-commercial districts. So, you know, impact to do, doing this, how many, how often do they actually need a bone, the need bonus, a density bonus when they're in some of these zoning districts that don't ha, even have a limit on density?
Yeah, the, the bulk of our affordable housing projects are typically in these multifamily zoning districts. We've had some in the general commercial, which also has a cap. I think they're allowed 45 units to the acre. But most, not all, but most of our affordable housing projects typically have a multifamily zoning, which does have a cap on density.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, I have a question. Are you done?
Yes.
Okay. My question is this, and I brought it up before. The density bonus thing, it's tied to size of units, right?
When it comes to affordable housing, no. It's tied to the affordability. So we have two different categories for density bonus. One is specific to affordable housing, which is what this one is.
Okay, so at the same time you're looking at this, can you look at that size requirement?
Next, uh, next slide, we will actually be talking about that. So specific to affordable housing, we want to propose allowing more density bonuses.
Okay, I want to explain to you why I'm not too excited about the previous one. Their concern in South Reno about any apartment, never mind whether they're affordable or not. It's not against a particular type of complex. It's about just more. And the more and the density bonus brings more traffic. And so what I would love to see, if we move forward with these, is to get some commitments from RTC or the developer to improve the transportation around and near associated with these complexes. They'll take the money and they'll go invest it in another part of below I-80, right? Spaghetti bowl, whatever. But it, it leaves the residents there with the traffic problem. So I hope when you come back, because we're not voting today, but you're going to bring us something back, that if we're going to have a density bonus and we're going to say it's unlimited or it's 45%, that's almost 50% more apartments than, than in the 60 to 80% AMI, 50% more. That, that's that many more places and those people do have cars. That's above 60% typically, as you mentioned workforce housing, a lot of those people have cars. May not be great cars, but they're getting to work with a car. And so I want to make sure that we know what we're doing when we do this, that the impacts on the community are managed. Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on that one?
This is what you want? Is that what you said?
Perfect, yep, no, just other comments, looking for more feedback while we're on this slide.
Ms. Foose, I want to have a more general comment with you. First of all, thank you for the presentation. You are being tasked, I think, with an unenviable job. In part because, you know, each of us in elected life have different thoughts and opinions about this topic matter. And as a result, it's hard to sort of connect the dots over the, I don't know, we'll say it's 12 or 15 meetings that we have had on this topic, right? And so I don't envy the place we've put you in, but I thank you for your graciousness in, in fielding the questions and staying with it. In, at its core, of course, my position is that we have a housing crisis here that is affecting all aspects of this community. And as a result, we've asked you to figure it out. We haven't, it's not a science. I wish it were, where you would say, okay, if we add this component and this component, X outcome will come. I'm looking around the country and basically what I see from a housing affordability standpoint is a lot of throwing the spaghetti against the wall and hoping to see what sticks. You've done a good job of trying to parse through ones that might be appropriate for here in our community. But a, a lot of the comments that I'm hearing sort of sound in that Groundhog's Day, right? We're just repeating these things. I look at communities across country. Yesterday, four or five communities in this country voted to remove all single family zoning in their entirety of their cities, right? This is an area where I think it probably goes too far, given where we are and the constraints we have on our housing stock. But the concept is fundamentally out there. And so for my part, I want you to understand that although you're breaking each one down as one idea, another idea, another idea, and asking us for feedback, I want us to pursue all the ideas, right? And unless you tell me, Councilmember Reese, I am not in a position to dedicate the staff resources or time to do all the things all at once. I, I am fundamentally of the opinion that we've got to be trying out new and innovative approaches, seeing what works. This question about unit size and I think the point here on this particular item is that when you add density bonuses, you still have the configurations of lot lines. You still have height issues. Building and construction materials can only be built in such a manner at certain configurations, whether it's steel or wood framed or concrete construction. So when people hear density, they, they're not always equating it to a specific lot. And so it really does drive the conversation into smaller micro units, right? Your density allows you to build smaller units, which by their nature are more affordable. And so on this particular one, I think you've given us this data point. I'm not sure the data point informed my decision, but go forth. Let's do those density bonuses and, and see where they come out with. And, and I think our mayor has consistently said, you know, if we're afraid to fail, then we're not really trying, right? Because I don't know which of these things is going to make a meaningful impact. But I know that if we do nothing, that is foreclosing the possibility of people having affordable housing here. And we're way behind, way behind.
Right, thank you so much. And I, I agree in the sense that, you know, either this council, which I think they do from all the comments that I have heard for a very long time, is that they want to continue to make sure it's affordable to live here. And it affects all of us, whether you're a teacher or police officer. We want everyone to be able to live and be able to afford to live in our community. So, but I also think, Angela, and you tell me if I'm wrong, I think they also all connect to each other to sort of have the ultimate outcome or the best outcome we can possibly have. And quite honestly, I mean, it's been a while, I think a little too long. You know, we probably should have been on the forefront of this for a long time. But you know, it, I know it takes a long time and everyone's busy and it's not something you can just do in a heartbeat. It takes a lot of work. So I want to tell you how much I appreciate you and everything that you've put into this. I want to be very supportive. You are also the expert. I am not. But I do know that I have a lot of people in this community that are struggling to find affordable housing. And I want to do whatever I can to put those people who are the most vulnerable into that housing. So however, we can be supportive, or at least me and it sounds like Devin and Councilwoman Dewar, and I'm sure my other colleagues, so thank you.
Great.
All right, anyone else? Go right ahead. Councilwoman Taylor, take it away.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm, based on my, you know, the last workshop, I'm, I'm in favor of everything. Anything that we can do, we need to look at if we're going to say we're going to solve the problem. These things are pretty minor and moving the needle, which you told us before, but at least it's something and it's things that we can do. And it's based on what AB 213 has asked us to do. In regards to the density bonuses, I know, I think you said there's one additional unit, but that one additional unit can make a big difference when you're trying to get our, when RHA or other funding mechanisms are in place. One, one unit can make the difference of whether you're going to get subsidized or HUD or whatever. I don't fully understand all of it yet. I've only been there for a year, but that is a big deal for some people.
So to fill that, fulfill that requirement.
Yeah, for that requirement. So I think it's great.
Because it's based on the number of units. A lot of people don't understand that. So let's say it's, it qualifies at 60, I think to what Councilwoman Taylor's saying qualifies at 60. If you build 59, no go for the whole project. So, all right, anyone else? Okay.
Okay, so those, those topics were specific to affordable housing. Now I'm going to talk about some changes we're proposing to market rate, so all housing, not specific to affordability. This goes back to the density bonus. We currently have a zoning code that allows a density bonus for market rate. And it's based on the size of your unit. So generally speaking, you know, when we have these smaller infill areas, you're trying to get as much, as many units as you can, but still meet your parking requirements and your landscape requirements. And what we found is that just having the ability to have one or two additional units, that density bonus above your zoning code, can make or break a project. So again, here's the, the three things we currently have in our zoning code and the changes we are proposing. For those larger units, that 1,800 square foot unit, we currently allow you to have a 15% density bonus. We're proposing to change that, increase that from 15% to 35%. Not moving mountains, making a small, a small dent. If your unit size is 1,400 square feet, so a little bit smaller unit size, you currently can have a 30% increase in your density. We're proposing to up that to 45%. And then finally, this is where we see the bulk of our density bonus is those smaller units, those thousand square foot or less type units. We currently allow you to go up to 45% more. So as an example, again, if you have 10 units, that 45% density bonus gets you another four units. It's not, it's not a lot, but it's, it's, it's great for these smaller infill. So we're proposing to increase that to 80%. Now let's go back and look at the data, again, last three years. Everyone that's used that density bonus, we've had 12 projects come forward using the density bonus. Most of them only got one to three more units as part of their density bonus project. We're not seeing huge use of this and we're not seeing a lot of additional units being added to the market. Total of, of all those projects in the last three years, we've added about 60 units to the market. I will say the biggest one was a 38 unit density bonus that was a motel conversion. We had a motel six that wanted to convert to apartments because the zoning didn't allow them to have the density, basically converting each motel room into a residential unit. They used that density bonus and were able to get another 38 units. So the bulk of this density bonus, I would say, has not been widely used and has not been done much to add more units to market. So that's why we said if, if we can make a small change, let's increase those. Let's bump up the ability to do more. So maybe in the next three years, instead of just 60 additional units, maybe we can get 100 additional units. I think to your point, that 89521 zip code, nobody has used the density bonus in that 89521 zip code. Most of those apartments are part of planned unit developments. They are not subject to our zoning code related to density bonus. So they would not be able to use this. Anything in South Meadows would be exempt, not part of this.
Yeah, so I have a question, comment? What I would like to see, I'm sorry, did you finish that item?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. I think this density bonus is very good based on size. But what I think, where I think we've missed the mark is setting 1,800 square foot as a beginning of the density bonus. And here's why. We want to drive smaller units. And so we've got to give an incentive for having smaller units. And I don't know if people are that conversant with 1,800 square foot, but that's kind of like a regular, modern suburban house. Uh, I lived in one that was 2,100 square feet. I mean, it's, it's your basic three bedroom home. And I don't think that we should be given a density bonus. I think we should be given the density bonus for things that are like, I wouldn't mind starting at 1,500 and setting, going down in 300 increments. In other words, still having three categories, but even going lower than 1,000 square foot, maybe it's 900. I, I think a studio is often 900, 950.
Yeah, I think the bulk, so we had 12 projects in three years. The bulk of those projects, most of them were less than 800 square feet in size. I think we had one that was that 8, 1,800 square feet, so one in three years that used the density bonus.
Well, anyway, I think to though, encourage people to your point.
Yeah.
We want to provide something that they go, oh, I could really get something out of this, get more units. I would lower all of these numbers and, and give the incentives so that if they're mostly around 800, let's give an incentive for 800. I mean, let's give an incentive for 1,200 and another for 1,500. Anyway, I, I don't think giving an incentive for building a standard American suburban house is getting us where we need. And you yourself are sort of saying it. Where I do think it came up, it created a lot of conflicts was that, and the mayor will remember this one out on Idowell Drive. That was 1,800 square foot units. And just that one unit sort of tipped the whole project upside down with parking, with height, with shadowing, with all kinds of things, just one unit. But if we had had on that, that we, you could get a density bonus for 1,000, I think that they could have built two or even three units more and not had this kind of neighborhood stress. And we would have got even more units. So I, I would like to see this, but I think we just have to target it a little bit more. That's my feeling, based on what I've observed, but I, I can't say it's any kind of special science.
Any other feedback on this one?
Yeah, I do. What is the definition currently for where these are applicable, this market rate infill development?
So this is citywide, anywhere that is just standard zoning. If you're in a PUD, it does not apply, but otherwise standard zoning everywhere it does.
So it could be something that's never had anything built on it, but it's annexed, you know?
Correct.
Yeah, so I, I don't, I'm not thinking it's the best approach. And I want to call attention to the addresses of these. If you look, most of these are under 1,000 address, which means they're very close in to the downtown core because we address from the core out. 943 South Wells, 643 La Rue. And so presumably small lots and so on. And they're going from two to one units, then some like 1039 Weeder. So these are very established on our grid layout. And I think there's another way to get there on these. And I think the approach that's being taken is out of step with what communities are doing. My research and understanding is that very few communities do density bonuses for non-subsidized, you know, AMI sort of restricted properties. They really don't do it. What they do is they have zoning in place that works for everyone through neighborhood planning. And I think that's what Shane Phillips was get, getting to. And so, you know, it just seems very clunky to have a zoning district that has an 80% density bonus. It's like going into the store that is always two for one. It's two for one. And it's like, well, it's always two for one. This isn't, I'm not stupid. You know, your, your model is two for one. So I, I just, from an administrative perspective, I have a little bit of trouble for that. I think it's hard to understand out in these neighborhoods, which are very established neighborhoods. I think other communities are doing other things. They're one, getting their zoning right through, you know, analysis of their maps and their neighborhoods. And they're probably doing things like, we'll talk to later on about allowing a lot of density in your single family zones. So I'm not 100% sure. So I'm not a hundred percent sure that it is the best approach. Um, I think what we have in, we have in, but, um, it just seems like a little clunky, but also out of step with how c- communities are doing it. So that's my view.
Okay, are we ready to move on?
Yes, we are.
Okay, and we only have two more, so bear with me. So the next one is, uh, development by right. This is again, something that Shane Phillips brought up. If we want to look at getting housing to market faster, the idea that you allow it to go to building permit by right without the public hearing process. And so we, we looked at other jurisdictions throughout Nevada, and we also looked at other jurisdictions outside Nevada, um, cities similar to Reno, and we said, uh, at what threshold do they trigger an entitlement? And this is specific to apartments and multifamily. What's the number of units? Where they, these other jurisdictions have said, this, this is the number of units that triggers an entitlement. Generally speaking, over a hundred units is what most jurisdictions use to say this is the number that should trigger an entitlement. So what we're proposing is to go back and look at our zoning code. Um, in our multifamily zoning districts, our neighborhood commercial, our general commercial zoning districts, we currently have a rule that says if you have between twenty and a hundred units being proposed, you need to go through that minor conditional use permit or conditional use permit process. So we're proposing to change that. Anything less than a hundred units, you would go straight to a building permit. Again, you have to meet all of your regular zoning code requirements. The density has to be there. The, the zoning has to allow for those numbers of units. When we go back in the last three years, how many projects have we processed that would have fit within this threshold here? So we had seven projects in the last three years that, again, were, were less than a hundred units, but had to go through, through that entitlement process. Now we had fourteen other projects, multifamily projects, that had to go through an entitlement process that were more than a hundred units. So again, um, you know, in the last three years, seven projects would have likely gone to building permit about six months faster. Again, it's not, it's not a huge difference, but again, looking at other jurisdictions, um, you know, we looked at Sparks, we looked at Fernley, we looked at our southern, um, sister cities, and what are they all doing? Most of them allow all multifamily by right, regardless of the number of units, as long as you meet your density requirements. Um, or they use that hundred or a hundred and ten, uh, unit as the threshold to require a public hearing. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I do have a question. Thank you. Um, you know, I'm surprised we didn't up this when we did the original code in twenty-one. Do you remember the discussion?
It used to be five. So five, over five units was the old trigger with the twenty twenty-one code. We changed that to twenty units.
For, for all zoning districts or just in general multifamily across the board?
It's specific. So generally, our multifamily zoning, neighborhood commercial, and general commercial.
Okay. So really, we've always had, it was five or, five or more? Was neighborhood commercial and general commercial before twenty-one?
Ooh, I'd have to go back and specifically, specifically look at that. What it is today, anything within our multifamily or neighborhood commercial or general commercial is what triggers it.
Do we, but what about these other districts, these newer districts we have?
So our, our, our mixed use?
Yeah.
Um, they, they do not.
They don't require it?
Typically, no.
Okay, so you're just talk, talking about do, and how many, and so your analysis is these seven ones, they were in these other zoning districts where you have the analysis?
Correct. They were in the, either the multifamily, all of those seven, I believe, were in a multifamily zoning district or a general commercial zoning district.
Okay, okay. And so this does sound reasonable, um, but still, um, if you have a trigger for a conditional use permit, minor or major for environmental sensitivity, like the floodplain or, um, you know, hillside development, you'll still, they'll still have to go through that track, right?
Correct.
Correct, okay, yeah. So I, I think this is not bad. Um, uh, and if we had, you know, obviously we got it right in our mixed-use zoning districts, I understand, but we didn't get it right, or we need to improve it in our multifamily. And, um, but our multifamily is MF thirty, correct?
We have MF fourteen and MF thirty.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
All right, are we moving on?
Any other comments on this one?
I'm going to reserve, I'm going to just take it under advisement. I don't have any comment, it's what I'm saying. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, Angela, fin- finish this.
All right, we're going to finish strong, missing middle. This is a word, I would say a buzzword that we're hearing a lot about. And that is everything from duplexes and triplexes and townhomes. You know, it's everything that's not really single-family on one end and multifamily on the other. It's all of that in the middle. And where do we allow it now? And should we be allowing it in more places? So generally speaking, duplex, triplex, fourplex, we don't see a ton of these types of developments in Reno. Uh, we do currently allow them in most of our, or in fact, all of our multifamily and limited in our single family. So what we're proposing is in two additional categories, SF three and SF five. These are fairly good-sized lots. These are, um, a third acre size lot and nine thousand square foot lots, so they're decent-sized lots. We're saying allow those types of uses, but with a conditional use permit. So a little bit more flexibility. You still have that conditional use permit, uh, as part of that process, so that still requires a public hearing.
Yeah, may I, Madam Mayor, may I comment on this? Um, I just want to make sure, because you have commented and I, and council hasn't. Anyone else want to make any comments? Okay, Councilwoman Breckus, um, go ahead. Thank you. You were done.
Yep, and if you want data, just here's the number of units we processed.
Can you go back to that slide? Um, that, this one causes me a little bit of, quite a bit of grief. Um, because, for example, the SF, um, what is it, SF five is the one that has nine thousand square feet?
Correct.
That's potentially over in Country Club Acres, Watts Street, you know, nine thousand square feet. So someone wants to come in for a duplex, a triplex or a fourplex there, and it sets up a battle royal of notice, planning commission, appeal to the city council. No one's doing it this way. I would, you know, ask the council to ask Ms. Foose to show you who is doing it this way on single-family zoned, is essentially allowing accessory dwelling units and up to go through the entitlement process, which we're trying to get rid of. This is not how it's being done. It's being done, as Mr. Reese mentioned, banning single-family zoning. Uh, California, I think more or less it's four units, because they've got these things called junior ADUs, and it's statewide. I'm not suggesting we do that, but I'm suggesting we be very honest and frank with ourselves that if we go this way, we are not doing, it's, it's really our, our version of an ADU, and no one's doing it that way with setting up planning commission, city council hearings, contention. I mean, we've, we've, I think a lot of us who have been on for a while have been through a lot of heated, heated hearings. We've even had to pay judgments on hearings. The last thing we want is heated hearings on someone trying to get a granny flat on a nine thousand square foot lot. This would be absolute, in my view, unless I can see some good case studies, which I don't believe exist, would, would be, bless you, not in our interest. Um, because it could also be ripe for a lot of inconsistent decisions by the planning commissioner, city council. So this is the way to do ADUs, to ban single-family zone, and it's going to set up a lot of neighborhood fights.
And maybe just to clarify, we do have three single-family zoning districts today where you can do this today with a conditional use permit.
And those are the LLRs, correct?
Nope, single-family.
Which zoning districts are those?
So we have three of them. It's single-family, I'm sorry, it's, um, SF eleven, it's permitted by right.
And what's the density of that, the minimum lot size of that?
SF eleven is five thousand square feet.
Five thousand square feet, you can come in for an ADU?
These are not ADUs.
They're guest quarters.
These are not ADUs, these are duplex, triplex, and fourplex.
Okay, okay, for, so a second unit, okay. And the other ones are?
So again, what we're, uh, all of the multifamily, it's allowed by right.
Yeah.
The other zoning districts that we're proposing would be that SF three and SF five. SF eight and SF eleven is where you could do it today.
Today, yeah, SF eight, SF eleven. And, and, you know, you got to, in my, we cannot have the conditional use permit process for these second units. It's, it's really out of step with the way things are done. Now, these would allow land of it, lot splits too, correct?
If, you, you have to have a lot that's big enough to split based on your zoning. This does not change that.
Okay, so then what could happen on one of these nine thousand square foot lots is if it can come through for a conditional use permit under this concept for fourplex?
Correct.
Okay, it could not be split, correct?
Cut you off there. Okay, Councilwoman Breckus, I'm going to go to Ca- Councilwoman Taylor, go ahead.
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Angela, I guess I'm a little confused. I don't, I don't see anything about ADUs in this one. I'm seeing mi- missing middle duplex, triplex, fourplex. What am I not understanding?
That's correct. ADUs is something we're doing separate from the code cleanup, and so that, that's not part of today's discussion. You guys have already given us direction, totally separate.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was at the right meeting. Okay, thank you very much.
Councilman Reese, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Foose. I think, um, this is exactly the kind of missing middle development that is needed. Um, we are finding it more difficult, um, given the housing market, the cost to get into entry-level housing, that we can't get, um, single folks, families, people downsizing life, all walks of life are looking for smaller, uh, units. So those duplexes, triplex, fourplex, often what happens is they've been built in neighborhoods around other single-family, and you don't notice that they're there unless you're the one living there. And so, um, I think there are cities around the country, I just happened to Google which cities are doing duplex, triplex, and fourplexes by right, and the list is very long. I mean, Portland, Somerville, Lexington, Milwaukee, the list is endless. There is a battle over this question about single-family, and when you eliminate single-family zoning, you are essentially saying that you could have duplexes there now, um, and we're not doing that, right? We're just saying that in this particular way, uh, given that we're using it in this manner, I think the zoning districts would be appropriate. I think too, it speaks to, you know, kind of the, uh, changing demographics of our area. I mean, I think about my own children, I have three of them, who would like to come back and live in this community, but have been priced out of the market, and there's really no way for them to get into market. Oftentimes, a duplex or a triplex are the way people can be able to live in the community where they have lived a long time, but are priced out of the market. They're also smaller micro-units generally. I, from the pictures you've shown, they're, you know, quite attractive. Um, I think too, part of what is confusing to me about some of the comments is that we're saying, how do we attract the kind of development that we want, right? If we don't, if we want to keep just doing single-family development, stamping out more single-family development sprawling to the ends of the earth, well then we continue on the path that we're on. If we want to encourage smaller units and therefore more affordable units, this is one way to do it. So, great job.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Councilwoman, um, Doer, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so just a couple of things. Um, I just want to process this and maybe offline, I'd like to get some examples. So I bet, I, that's the way I best learn to understand, we have this today, but would this change, we'd have this, and this is what it would look like or how it would take place. Um, so that's what I would like to do before you bring it back. Um, number two is, um, Ms. Breckis brought up country estates, country club estates. And so that has a, what, a plan?
It does.
Uh, what do you call it?
A neighborhood overlay.
Neighborhood plan. So does Greenfield. And so how would this, that intersect with these neighborhood plans?
Those are very specific on what types of development is allowed, and this would not change that. So if.
And groups that have like existing HOAs that have a certain form that's laid out, how would it affect those?
Same thing, um, for any of these developments that maybe are not part of a PUD, because again, this does not affect planned unit developments, this is just straight zoning. We do have a lot of developments that have HOAs that are not part of a planned unit development. If their HOA restricts duplex, triplex, then they, they wouldn't do it. They would not be able to do it.
And then lastly, I just want to say this. I got a little confused a minute ago when you said part of the code cleanup. Last time, and I was reviewing the minutes, um, we asked you to separate out the housing initiatives from the code cleanup. So I want to make sure going forward, that's still your thinking, I mean, that's what we voted on. Um, I do not want to bundle these with four hundred, I think you said seventy pages of code cleanup. I, I think they stand on their own. It's something to be proud of. It's an initiative that we're doing. And we should be able to identify it, talk about it, and do it, and not have it all jumbled up with four hundred pages as something else. So I just, this seemed to be the right time to say that, because you're drawing to a close.
Great.
Madam Mayor, may I ask another question?
Hold on. Uh, Councilwoman Ebert, did you want to weigh in? No, nothing? Okay. All right, go ahead. Councilwoman Martinez.
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. Thanks, Dirk Foose, for all your work on this. Um, I think, as you've noted in your staff report, each one of these will slowly tick the mark a little bit for us to be able to allow more housing to come onto market. And so I appreciate all your work in looking at every single piece and how we can make affordability, uh, a priority here in the city of Reno. And I want to commend the previous council and council members that were here to, that initiated some of those efforts. And we heard that from some of the public comments earlier today from the high school students, right, and the struggles that their families have had, um, in trying to purchase a home or look for places that are a little more, more permanent for them and their families. Um, I like all the ideas that you are proposing, the one that I'm having a little bit of a challenge with, and just given the fact that, uh, is the by right development, I would be more comfortable maybe with sixty units, just given the fact that the seven projects that you outlined were six units to forty units in size. Um, and just given the current zoning, that would be about two parcels. I would be feel more comfortable there. But again, I'd leave that up to the will of the body, and I just wanted to make sure I got that on record, um, in expressing those concerns. But again, I commend you and your staff for the work on addressing some of the recommendations that came from Mr. Phillips when we had the workshop at the beginning of November. Thanks again.
Great.
All right, Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, so on this, um, yeah, I know we're in a hurry to go places today, I apologize. Um, it's kind of a, you know, it's follow-up to our workshop. So the SF five and the SF eight zoning districts, the conditional use permit that's allowed for those, is it a major that goes to the planning commissioner, or is it a minor that goes administratively?
That would be conditional use permit, so planning commission.
Okay, planning commission. And so the SF three and the SF five goes to planning commission also?
Correct.
Okay. And then the SF five and the SF eight, have we had anyone come through with, with those to the planning commission?
I don't believe so, no.
Yeah, see, here again, and, and then the other question is, um, there won't be allowance for parcel map, mapping these. So the homeownership, you know, which we know is a part of the agreement issue, it's not going to be allowed through this, correct?
You're asking if we can split a parcel?
Yeah.
It would be dependent on the size of the parcel in the zoning district, not based on this. This doesn't change that.
Okay, so the underlying, okay. Um, so, okay, so those ownership options will go. See, I just feel like it makes us look and feel like we're doing something, but I don't think we're going to get anywhere on this. We've had it in the other zoning districts, we haven't had any come through. We're setting up a battle for planning commission hearings. I don't even know who's going to want to be the first person to pay to go through the process as an option on a, on a lot. I, I just, you know, if, it seems like the council wants to go with this, staff's very strong on it. Um, to me, I think, I don't think it's really going to be the tool, um, and it could be detrimental in souring the taste for, you know, density in some of these areas. But, um, you know, I would just be mindful of, of checking and seeing if it delivers, because we don't want to be in this situation again, because I feel we're in the situation from twenty seventeen, eighteen, where we didn't get anything done, and that's why we're still struggling. So anyway, th- those are my comments. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to express those.
All right, um, I would like to, so just a couple of questions for you, Angela.
Yep.
And, um, rap, and I'll give you a motion in a second. Um, how long have you been doing this? Your, your whole career in?
Just planning in general?
Yeah.
Probably twenty-five years?
Okay. And, um, I know you, and you put a lot of thought and effort into this. And you also have to go to school for this. You are the expert in this. Maybe just give me a little bit of, some background of why you think this is so important. I get that we are up here representing the community, our constituents, and all of that. I also think you are the expert. I want you to give me your reasons, um, because I know they're incredibly valid. And we need to continue to move the needle, and it's very hard to, I guess, go against someone that's been doing it for twenty-five years, knows what you're looking at. When you're looking at something, you know what you're looking at when it comes to doing this. So kind of give me just sort of your little synopsis.
Yeah, and I think that's fair. I think, you know, it's fair to say that, that the passion bucket is overflowing at this point. You know, as a planner, we try not to take things personal. And when I look at housing, and I look at Reno, and I look at our master plan, we are not doing enough. As a city, we should be doing more. We, we talk all the time about how we don't like sprawl. And every project that comes forward that is in these sprawling neighborhoods, we get negative feedback on. And I understand that we need both. But what we're saying is, what can you, city council, do today to try and fix that, try and help that? We're not saying that we're only going to allow infill. We're saying, what can we do to encourage more projects in infill, right? Where we already have a. Right, where we already have existing schools, we have services, and you can walk to a grocery store. What can we do from a zoning code perspective to make it better? There's not a whole lot we can do unless this council is ready to make major decisions, and, and I don't see this council making major decisions on housing, the ones that Shane Phillips recommended. We're not gonna double our zoning density, right? We're not gonna change our MF thirty zoning to MF sixty. It's not going to happen. I would love to bring that forward, but I know it's not gonna happen. So what can we do in the meantime? If you want to do something, these are very small, tiny things. It's barely gonna do anything, if it's going to do anything at all, to your point, none of these things are significant enough to change anything, but sitting back and doing nothing is not working.
Yeah.
That is insanity.
And we can nitpick it all day long and sit there and say, this isn't right, that's not right, and that's exactly what we do up here, and then we vote down projects and say, hey, I'm so great, I've stopped, you know, putting more projects into the city because it's putting, you know, more inventory into the city, and then you can say, yes, I'm really for affordable housing, and you never vote on one project, even if it's not affordable, which we know supply and demand. So with that, thank you so much, I appreciate it, I'm gonna, uh, give you a motion?
We, we don't need to motion, I just took your feedback and we can leave it at that.
Okay, perfect. Wait, I did now have a question.
Do you want what?
I do have a question, no.
Question? Yeah, go ahead. If you have a question for us, sure.
Okay, so, thank you, Angela, uh, for everything. Um, so I do have a few questions now. Um, if we were to change this by right, uh, density, um, Councilmember Breckus brought up, like, if, if, um, someone were to try to develop in a floodplain or a hillside, it would trigger additional review. Um, something that I'm concerned about in my ward is, um, sewer treatment capacity. If, um, we were to change the density and a lot of, just potentially a lot of these apartments or high density housing were to go in, um, would anything trigger, you know, a, a review of what our sewage capacity is? And we were currently doing flow shave out of there, I mean, would there be any kind trigger for that, or, um, traffic studies or anything like that? We're gonna be doing some NDOT and RTC expansions out there, so those are just kind of things that are on my mind, I'm not sure if this would, you know, trigger anything like that.
We do look at all of that at time of building permit as well. On the, on the sewer issue, all of that is determined at time of building permit.
Okay.
Um, this doesn't change that.
Okay.
Same with traffic studies, we have thresholds, um, in our zoning that based on the number of units decides when you have to do a traffic study, so this would not change that. We would still look at all those issues at the building permit stage.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone, moving along. Um, I hope that that helps.
Perfect, yeah, thank you so much. I appreciate all of your feedback and, and patience on this.
And I think you should bring forward some aggressive, uh, I guess, recommendations that he brought here. There was a reason you brought him, and I think, I think a lot of it was bold and probably very warranted, so...
I echo that, not the watered down versions.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Okay, great.
Okay, moving along, we're going to item F one. Madam Clerk, do you have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we do not have any public comment on this item, nor have I received any correspondence.
Okay, perfect. Um, I'm gonna send it to Carl Hall, go ahead.
This is ordinance adoption, ordinance number six, 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 four, case number ANX twenty-four dash zero, 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 one, Pembroke Drive annexation, ordinance annexing to and making part of the city of Reno, certain specifically described territory of three parcels, being plus or minus one hundred and twelve point four acres of property located north of Pembroke Drive, plus or minus seven hundred and ninety-six feet of its intersection with South McCarran Boulevard. Site is adjacent to the city of Reno jurisdictional boundary located within the sphere of influence, and has a master plan land use designation of public, quasi-public, PQP. Upon annexation, the site will have the parks, greenways and open space, the POGOs zoning. And designation together with other matters which pertain to or are necessarily connected therewith, Ward three.
Okay, thank you so much, may I get a motion?
Move to adopt.
I have a motion to adopt, I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, um, sending it right back to City Clerk, item G one, this would be appointments to civil service, and I think, do you have any public comment on this item?
Madam Mayor, we have no public comment on item G one.
Thank you. I'm gonna, um, hold on one second. Um, oh, I'm gonna send it actually to, uh, Councilwoman Ebert, you're on there, do you wanna give me two recommendations?
Yeah, I'd like to recommend Brad Johnson and Estencio, I'm so sorry, I don't margin it, yeah.
Okay, all right, I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, perfect. Um, we are now G two. Two. All right, Madam Clerk, any public comment on this item? I assume none. May I get a motion for the financial advisory board, uh, appointment?
Madam Mayor, I'll recommend one appointment at this time, it's James Christman.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, item G three, I would like to take this, um, like a consent agenda, if nobody, if there isn't anyone that has any changes to this, um, I'm gonna send it to Councilwoman Reese.
Um, Madam Mayor, I would like to just stay where I am, and I think perhaps I'll just leave it at that. Um, if there is any that I could, um, give up, it's the financial advisor board, it's not cause I don't appreciate or love the work that they do, it's pretty incredible, but it conflicts for me every week.
Okay.
Um, every time it's held, so I have to race from one meeting to the other, so that would be the only one that I would have.
Thank you. Anyone else that wants some changes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, uh, happy where I am too. Um, having served as a liaison for eight years to the Arts and Culture Commission, I think, I, I've been observing it, and I just feel like a, a change might be good.
Okay.
Um, I don't know who would be interested in that, but...
Well, Madam Mayor, in fairness, I am interested in arts and culture, but I didn't know that it was, um, something that you would be willing to give up, cause I know...
I'm not on it.
Oh, um...
Well, okay, we can go, we can visit arts and culture.
Okay, I see what you're saying, you're gonna treat it like consent, I see that.
Yeah, I'm not on it, but I just know that they've struggled the last year, so...
Okay, okay, and any other boards? No other changes? Okay, I don't think there's anyone else that wants to make a change. Um, so all of those other boards, please give me a motion to keep everyone in place.
I'll, I'll make a motion to keep everyone in place, but if Mr. Reese is willing, I'd like to nominate him to be on Arts and Culture Commission liaison.
All right.
I'm willing, and so I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, and then what about the financial advisory board?
Good question.
Um, I'm happy to go on there.
Really? Okay, well, I'll make a motion to appoint, uh, Mayor Sheevy to the finance advisory board.
All right, thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, um, yes, and it's always comprised of some incredibly talented individuals.
They're very smart people.
I, I can learn from them, but they're gonna teach me everything, so I'm not, not too worried. Um, okay. Madam Clerk, did you get all that? Perfect.
So good.
Thank you, and where are we at?
Item H one, any council comments?
All right, any comments from council members? Seeing that there are none, uh, we're gonna move right along. Um, Madam Clerk, any public hearings? Seeing there are none on my agenda, uh, last but not least, any public comment?
We do have a public commenter in the room, Javonte Ja- Jackson.
Perfect, love to have you, come on up! How are you?
Good.
What school are you from?
Huck High School.
He did a great job earlier today.
No, he hasn't been here yet.
No, well, he hasn't been here yet, I'm sorry, but the whole team is what I meant to say. We had thirty students from Huck High School.
So future senators, presidents, right?
Well, I just know they were amazing, that's what I know.
All right, go ahead, the floor is yours, my friend.
All right, okay. Hello, my name is Javonte Jackson, and I'm here to talk about how Reno, Nevada, like many cities, faces its challenges with homelessness, but in twenty twenty-one, Reno was voted one of the least affordable cities in the US. According to the Reno Gazette, the issue mostly coming from factors such as economic struggles. For example, Reno built two hundred low income homes for housing in early May of this year in response of homelessness, but according to the Nevada Home Alliance, the biggest reason for Reno having so many homelessness, homeless in the, is the barriers to getting housing and lack of income. But many local organizations aim to address homelessness by providing shelter or support services, but there, but they address, but there don't, aren't any that address high apartment, high price apartments, and home for people that don't meet the requirements. And the people that do can barely afford to live in Reno with that income, causing lots of people to go homeless in the pandemic. Low income is the number one reason for the state of California with the most amount of homeless ending up homeless. This is why I suggest we raise income or make Reno affordable, because other prices are increasing while income is low. Dang, my, my bad.
All right, take your time.
Reno isn't affordable, this has been happening for many years, causing a gap on economic growth, causing more people to go homeless every day. The economy in Reno is so bad, my family knows people with full-time jobs and home, and homeless because they don't meet housing requirements. How can, how can people with an economic problem in a place, live in a place that is